For being here and I certainly apologize for.
Is it just me or did we lose Julian?
I think we lost him. I thought it was me, but.
Yeah, yes, he's back.
Mr. Chairman has been having some volume difficulties.
Well, that happened again?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let me, let me, I've been, I've been anticipating this. Wasn't sure what was going on. Still not sure what's going on. I don't know if it's the computer or.
But we can see you and hear you now.
Okay, great.
You froze.
We'll start with. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I said you, you, you froze, so I'm not sure if it's the bandwidth issue.
Uh, we're. We're coming up with a backup in two seconds. So anyway, we'll start with the appointment of Miss. Mr. Lawrence Ruth.
And I believe Mr. Ruth is, is on, uh, Mr. Chairman.
I am Ms. Ruth.
Oh, sorry.
Just to be clear, I have a man's first name. That's why I put Lori in parentheses because I go by Lori.
Okay, I, I apologize. I did not see the parentheses, but.
That is all right.
You're being appointed to the Ethics Commission. And I guess want to, uh, thank you so much for your service. And is there, is there anything you would like to say to, uh, the council?
Uh, no, it's, it's my pleasure to serve. I believe in local government. I think this is an important job. I'm happy. I understand I'm filling out somebody's term and I'm happy to do that. Um, and if you have any questions to me, I'm happy to answer them.
Now, I, I'll, I'll ask the members if they have any questions or comments, but I certainly appreciate your service and your willingness to serve. Any question, comments from the members? We will move on, uh, stay right there. I guess we'll move on to the other appointment is Ms. Laura Ray.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I was notified by, uh, the administration that Ms. Ray would, uh, not be able to attend, uh, due to a vacation schedule, scheduled that had been previously scheduled.
Okay, no problem. Uh, any questions or comments from the members?
Good for her. She's on vacation.
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilman, uh, Crandall.
Uh, I, I'm gonna go ahead and assume that this is Ms. Laura Ray, um, from the Seventh District. Um, and, uh, just wanted to speak very highly of her. She's very active in her community. I believe that she's still the president of the Edgemere Spurs Point Rec Council. And it's an outstanding job with that organization and, uh, uh, very community involved and, um, uh, couldn't think of a better person to, uh, endorse for, uh, uh, for this spot on the Ethics Commission. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. Uh, if there's no further questions or comments, we thank you so much, uh, Mrs. Ruth for, for willing to serve and we wish you well and I'm pretty sure there should be no problems voting for you to confirmation next week.
Do you, will you need me there, sir?
I don't think so. I think it'll be a smooth, easy vote.
All right, well, just somebody will let me know if they want me and I can certainly appear if I need to.
All right, thank you so much for your time and thanks for coming here today and your willingness to serve.
And are you done with me now?
Yes, ma'am.
The judge, may I be excused?
Yes, you may be excused.
Thank you very much.
Unless one of my other members want to talk to you more. No, I think you're good.
Thank you very much, everybody.
All right, have a good day. All right, next we'll move on to the nomination of, uh, Baltimore County, uh, Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board. Any questions or comments?
And Mr. Chairman, um, it's not listed on the agenda, but the three individuals that have been, uh, nominated, uh, the, the three, the three names, um, uh, are, are compiled, I believe, by the administration and then they are forwarded to the council, um, for the council's blessing, if you will. Uh, and then those three names, if, if the council, uh, sees fit to approve, are then forwarded on to the governor, um, for appointment to the, the Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board. The three individuals are Mr. William Chase, Mr. Raymond, uh, Shimier, and Ms. Aram Abasi. And I think, uh, Ms. Abasi is on.
Yes, Ms. Abasi, would you like to say a few words? We certainly appreciate your willingness to serve on the, uh, Property Tax Assessment Appeal Board. You have to turn your, your mic on.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, no, I just want to thank you all, uh, for, uh, putting my name in and I certainly look forward to, um, engaging with, um, with this board.
Okay, we thank you so much for your willingness to serve. I also see Mr. William Chase. Uh, Mr. Chase? Who has a long service to the county? Mr. Chase, you'd like, like to say a few words? I mute your mic. All right. It only took me an hour to get, figure out how to get that one into the system. I apologize for being late. That's okay. We all were late. I understand I'm here because I'm asking for reappointment to be chairman of the Board of Appeals for Assessment Taxation in Baltimore County. I've been doing it for 10 years now and I want to continue doing it. And I just forward my name to the county executive, so, and I understand I have to go before the council for their approval too. Well, we certainly appreciate your service to the county and your willingness to continue to serve. Uh, any questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, advocate on behalf of Mr. Chase. I've known Mr. Chase for many, many years. He's been, uh, outstanding contributor in many ways to the county. Um, been on the planning board and, uh, served in his, uh, in a civic capacity in a variety of ways and, and is an excellent choice for this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I certainly, uh, uh, concur. Any additional questions or comments for Mr. Chase? I have no additional comments. Thank you so much. And who was the other person? I see a couple of other folks here, but I don't remember the name.
The, the other, Mr. Chairman was Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Raymond, uh, Shimier or Shimeer, Shimeer?
There, there.
Schmier, sorry. Sorry about that.
Is he here? No, I don't think he's here.
I don't think so, sir.
Okay, well, again, I certainly appreciate your service to the county and your willingness to serve. And, uh, I would hope that there would be no problems with your confirmation vote, uh, next week. And, uh, after this, you can certainly, uh, leave if you like and. I'll figure out how to get out of the system. I? I have to figure out how to get out of the system here. Click every red button you see. The red one with the X will work. And you can, you can be here, uh, next week if you like. We will certainly recognize you and give you a chance to say a few words. But if it, if it's so that you, uh, have something else to do and you do not want to, that we certainly understand. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thanks. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve, the citizens of Baltimore Council. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, so now we'll move on to, uh, page eight. Uh, Bernard Brooks, Deputy Director of the Department of Corrections.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm coming before you this evening for two reasons. One, the Department of Corrections was requesting a council approval to amend the current contract for Airmark Correctional Services to provide food for the inmate population here at the detention center. Airmark has been providing its food services since 2013. The current contract will expire on June the 30th. Excuse me, with no additional renewals. Airmark has reached out to the county to extend the current contract for an additional one year or until a new contract is executed, whichever comes first. All of the terms, conditions, and provisions of the agreement will remain in effect. This will be in the best interest of the county to continue this contract while additional time is needed to complete the solicitation process. The county desires to amend the contract to provide additional renewal a year to avoid interruption to the food services here. The FY23 appropriation cost to provide food services to the inmate population is $1,670,000, so $714. The funds appropriated in the FY23 corrections budget.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you very much, Mr. Brooks. We'll move right along.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilman, uh, Crandall.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, uh, it's Mr. Brooks, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, um, sir, I don't mean to blindside you by this. Um, I'm not sure if this is in your, your bailiwick with your, your work in the, in the department, but is there anything that you'd like to address with, with, uh, some of the local news reports that we've had about some problems at the, um, detention center in terms of uh, behavior and discipline and, um, some of the things that have, have gone on there? Is there anything that the, the department would like to, to issue now or, or, um, tell the council about?
Sir, with all due respect, there's nothing that I would like to, uh, address the council with those uh, issues that you just mentioned. I know that we have the Public Information Office through the CE's, uh, office there and all official comments should, I believe, technically come through that office.
Okay, sir, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now, Mr. Chairman, there was one other thing.
Oh, yeah, we got you. We got you. The, uh, the, uh, the amendment to a contract with RMR.
Well, uh, I.
An electric motor.
Yes, that's the second one.
Okay.
First amendment to that electric motor repair as well for repairs and preventive maintenance for kitchen equipment at the detention center. This contract includes all labor, maintenance, materials that's necessary to repair all of our food service equipment as well as the quarterly preventative maintenance that we have on the kitchen equipment that is vital to the daily operation of the food service vendor as well as our departmental staff. As the council is aware, we provide three, excuse me, three meals a day with continuous use of all this equipment for over a thousand inmates. The contract was awarded to the electric motor repair through a competitive bid process. There were no other bids received. The contract was effective in July 1st of 19 after council approval. The initial term of the contract was for one year before one-year renewal options. The amendment to increase not to exceed $426,223 for the entire term of the contract, if it pleased the council, sir.
Yeah, I have to say, I'm a, a little curious. When I first saw the electric motor repair company, I was thinking about maybe an electric motor that moves the bars back and forth or maybe an electric motor that moves a fence so a vehicle could come in and out. Uh, and then I saw kitchen equipment and I thought Costco, Sam's Chicken on the Rotisserie. Is that the kind of motor repair we're making here? I don't know, I'm.
No, sir. That company has been around for a long, long time and their specialty is kitchen, industrial and commercial kitchen operations, whether it's steam tables, ovens, uh, dishwashers, convection ovens, you name it. Their specialty is keeping large-volume food service kitchen operations going. Because as you can imagine, if you're producing 3,000 meals 305 days a year, that equipment takes a lot of wear and tear. So, no, they're not doing any small-scale rotisserie or moving doors back. They.
Well.
Based on kitchens and institutions, sir.
I'm not an expert, but I'll give them some advice. I don't know how they started, but they probably do for a name change. I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Uh, but obviously they know what they're doing. Uh, any questions or comments from the members? It's good to know that we are, uh, uh, feeding our inmates, uh, three meals a day. I certainly hope they are nutritious meals because I would hate to see another class action lawsuit coming from the inmates. Uh, but anyway.
They approved by a dietitian, sir, so their nutritional adequacy has been evaluated and signed off on.
Good, good. Any questions or comments from the members? Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I guess having a little fun with you.
Thank you.
Inside joke amongst all of us. Um, all right, we'll move on to Ms. Deb Schindel.
Good evening, Councilman Chair and members of the council. The administration is requesting the approval of an agreement with Baltimore County Revenue Authority to provide parking, garage maintenance and inspection services at various owned and/or operated garages that require annual inspection, testing and cleaning service. I do want to point out this is an inter-agency agreement. And in no event shall the total compensation paid to the contractor exceed the sum of the county council approved appropriation during this agreement. This agreement shall continue for 10 years. Um, and it's very important to, for everyone to understand that according to the bid response we received from the Revenue Authority, the estimated annual cost to Baltimore County to maintain its all, all of its garages uh, with testing and such is $310,635. Uh, that is, um, our previous contract that is in existence now um, will be replaced and, um, there will be no fee to, to not, uh, to replace this contract with this agreement with the Revenue Authority. And that is a savings of 120,000, uh, a year for the county because our previous contract, um, was $430 and 200, I'm sorry, $430,230. Um, our previous contract, um, expired, would expire August the 24th. And quite frankly, we just really brought this forward because we felt it was a great savings for Baltimore County and a good partnership and agreement between the Revenue Authority and for the best interest of Baltimore County. I can take any questions if you'd like.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Schindel.
You're welcome.
On to, uh, Chief Joanne Rump. Lion Total Care.
Good evening, Councilman Jones and council members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. So we are requesting, uh, the approval of contract with Lion Total Care to clean, repair, decontaminate, and also possibly rent turnout gear for any of the needs for the Baltimore County firefighters. Um, this will be a, upon council approval, it will commence, uh, it will continue through April 12th of 2023. And it will have an automatic renewal for three additional one-year periods. Um, the compensation shall not exceed $900,000 for the entire four and one-quarter uh, month term. And it also includes the renewal and extension periods. Um, now, one might ask, why are we asking for this in addition to the turnout gear washers and dryers? Uh, because there are things that these washers and dryers will not be able to clean. In addition to that, the NFPA standard requires that annually, we have a third-party analysis group clean and inspect our turnout gear uh, to affect safety measures. Um, and that is all I have unless there's any additional questions, sir.
Any questions, comments from the members? I do not have any questions. Thank you, uh, Chief Rump. We'll move right on to, um, page 15.
Thank you, sir.
Brown, sure. Deputy Director of Aging.
Good evening, Council, Council President Jones and the Baltimore County Council. Thank you for having me. Um, the administration is requesting approval of an agreement with Morning Star Baptist Church of Baltimore County to lease approximately 8,350 square feet of its Community Outreach and Education Center for temporary operations of our Woodlawn Senior Center while the original location undergoes an expansion and renovation. The lease commences August 1st, 2022, continues for one year and is renewable on a month-to-month basis. Rental cost for the initial one-year term is $144,000. And should, and that's at $12,000 a month. Should the lease renewal occur because of any construction delays, rent will continue at the monthly rate of $12,000. Uh, the lease permits the county to install telephone and internet connectivity at its cost. Um, a cost has not been determined at this time for that. The lease also states that Morning Star Baptist Church will be responsible for all utilities as well as services including housekeeping, pest control, snow and ice removal, lawn maintenance, and painting. In addition, the church will provide tables and chairs as needed, the use of its sound system, and day porter services to provide set up and breakdown of rooms before and after scheduled senior center events. Uh, I will take any questions if there are any that I might be able to assist with.
Any questions? Yeah. Yes, Councilman Quirk?
Yeah, I mean, if you could just, um, address the auditors and a couple of questions, if you could just address those, if you could.
Deputy, um, Deputy Brown, um, ma'am, if you would like, it's Deb Schindel from property management. These are definitely very oriented to the lease and the process. If you would like, ma'am, I can take them for you.
Actually, um, I was gonna ask because Laura Riley, the director of the department, is on vacation this week, which is why I am here. And she is the one who would have better knowledge of those questions than I would. So, uh, Ms. Schindel, if you are able to take those questions, that's greatly appreciated.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. Council members, thank you very much, and the auditors, thank you very much. Um, I will take the opportunity to answer your questions. Um, so for the first question is, why didn't, um, the county consider utilizing a commercial real estate consultant to uh, assist in the search? And quite frankly, we did. Um, we always look and we do have, um, a contract with a real, um, a realtor company. Um, and so when we looked at, um, the Woodlawn Senior Center um, location and the proximity of it, we did have some preliminary conversations with our realtor. Um, but we also got some good feedback from the members themselves and some nonprofit organizations that, um, that were interested in supporting the, the county and its endeavors and would be interested. We vetted, um, a couple sites and this was obviously one of them. And this actually fit within the scope of the parameter of their service area and their needs and we started working with them. So we always do try to look for our real estate, um, use our consultant i- if possible, but we happened to just get the lead on this and it worked out very well. Um, so frankly, that's why we didn't bid it out. Go ahead, sir.
That's what's, uh, Stacy.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Chair might be recognized.
Uh, one second, uh, Councilman Quirk, are you done?
Uh, no, I, I think she was, um, just answering the, the first of the, the three questions that I.
Put it to contribute to, um, that piece. One of the reasons why this particular facility, uh, was selected in, in conjunction with the members who attend the Woodlawn Senior Center was access, um, for ambulatory, uh, issues that there was no, no, um, elevator that, uh, individuals had to uh, take to get to activity space. The proximity from the parking lot to the entrance to the facility was the other thing. There were a number of things about this particular facility, plus the close proximity, uh, to the Woodlawn, um, Senior Center, um, being, you know, less than a mile away. So that, all of those, uh, considerations came into, uh, the process.
Okay.
Correct.
Deb Schindel?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, yes, sir, thank you. And how did we, um, actually determine the rental rate was fair and reasonable? So here in Baltimore County, we actually, um, have a lease department. And so what we tried to do was working with, uh, we keep a running tally of what, what we think is fair market value and we do compare it to the market. So we work with our realtor also to kind of give us some, uh, some listings and so that we know how much per square foot and what type of class building that it is and what kind of building, um, it requires. Obviously, this is unique because this is sort of a, this is obviously a turnkey operation. Um, but we did compare it to some of the other rent that we're paying in the area and other areas, um, by taking a realtor's estimate and saying this is my, how, what a going rate is in that community. So we do, uh, do a very informal process to kind of make sure that we're getting fair market value.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Okay. Uh, all right. Audit, are you satisfied with the, uh, explanations or are there other questions?
That was it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let me see. Move right along to, uh, what was it? Which church was that again?
Morning Star.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On, on Woodlawn Drive.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Security.
All right, um, next, move right along to, um, Mr. Whit Cantless and, uh, Baltimore County Public Schools.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, my name is Whit Cantless, Budget Director at the, uh, City Schools and Chris Hardlove, our CFO is also here with me. Uh, we are presenting the Budget Appropriation Transfer Request uh, to the council again as a follow-up to, uh, last month's meeting where you, uh, rejected the bat. I'd like to give you a quick summary. Uh, good afternoon in front of you. You'll find the revised Budget Appropriation Transfer Request. The BCPS budget consists of 13 separate appropriations by activity as prescribed by the Maryland Department of Education. Transfer of funds between activities requires approval from the Board of Ed and the County Council. The board approved the revised bat on June 14th. Based on close monitoring expenditures throughout the first three quarters of FY 2022, our current year expense projections show an overall surplus but with shortfalls in some activities and surpluses in others. Because BCPS carries no contingency budget, the only way to manage unanticipated expenses during the year is via amendments to the budget. We're projecting overall, we will finish the year more than $30 million under budget. Each quarter, all budget line transfers that make up the spat were reviewed with the Budget Committee to address concerns raised in the efficiency study. Based on concerns voiced previously by the County Council, all new requests have been stripped from the bat. The bat we are asking you to approve only concerns the balancing of the budget by activity to match actual year-to-date expenditures. Available funds of 12.5 million are coming from Activity 3 Instructional Salaries due to salary savings due to vacancies and a challenging hiring environment. Our requested transfer of 5.9 million to Activity 4 Instructional Textbooks and Supplies will provide funds required for the completed purchase of FY 22 textbooks, 1.2 million. The purchase of digital display boards for classrooms of 2.9 million and principal's reallocation of their per pupil operating budgets of 1.8 million. A transfer of 6.6 million to Activity 11 Maintenance Plan will provide funds required for maintenance service contracts, 4.9 million, bottled water in schools of 900,000, and the emergency chiller replacement at Deer Park Middle School of 806,000. We'll now be happy to take any questions you might have.
Uh, I will, number one, I appreciate you coming back with a more leaner version. I know that Councilman Marks had an issue about a sign. And, uh, Councilman Marks, if you want to say anything or give us a report on that?
Well, that's, that was a, a minor request. Uh, I certainly appreciate the school systems looking in, uh, into the, the JOPA view elementary school sign. Uh, I, I do have two other questions though. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, uh, use my time for that?
Absolutely.
Okay, the first, uh, question is, um, when Dr. Williams spoke to us, what, I guess, two weeks ago, um, he said that we would have periodic updates on the school bus driver situation. Um, will we be having an update meeting anytime soon?
Um, uh, thank you for the question, Councilman, um, or we, I'm sorry, Mike. Did I cut someone off? I'm sorry. Um, yeah, we, we, uh, we plan on our next, having our next update. Uh, we're going, going to do that for our board or at the July 12th meeting. So anytime after that, we could, um, we could update, we would provide an update, but that will be, that'll be the next update. It'll be at the. or at the July twelfth meeting, so anytime after that, we could, um, we could update, we would provide an update, but that will be, that'll be the next update. It'll be at the July twelfth, uh, Board of Ed meeting.
Okay, um, thank you. I, I think the, the specific request was also for him to talk to us. So can you please pass that along that?
I, I will do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, a- as I said, at that time, we have the summer and we should be doing everything in our power to make sure that these problems don't persist. Uh, the other question I have, and, and I, I will preface this by saying that I did inform, um, staff I'd be asking this question. Um, uh, very concerned about the, the revelations that Fox forty-five has brought forward about the defects in our buses. Um, Fox forty-five found, um, uh, found numerous defects, and there was a, a state report, um, that, uh, uh, came back that I know you're addressing. And, uh, then that report, I think, found a hundred and forty-five defects in our school buses. Um, can you describe what is being done to address the, um, the M dot report? Um, and I'm also particularly interested in knowing why we apparently submitted paperwork that said there were no problems.
Um, I can update you that this is the, the report that came out late, um, in calendar year twenty twenty-one. And my understanding is that we have, uh, we have, um, all those repairs have been done and, uh, we, you know, we've responded to, to everything in that report.
Okay, I think there's, there's a more, there was a more recent report from M dot, very recently. So if you, if you can please, um, if someone could please get back to us on what we're doing, that would be very helpful.
We can do that, yes. I, and I, I, I was under the understanding we were referring to a similar report, but yes, we can certainly follow up and, and make sure you get, uh, good information.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, you know, I, I know we harp on this issue of transportation a lot, but of the, the safety of our, uh, students is the, is of paramount importance, and, uh, again, along with the reliability, something we need to be looking at. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Catch?
Thank, thank you ver- very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with the bat that you're proposing today, uh, I understand you saying that, uh, the money is being transferred to purchases that have already been made?
Um, not transferring to purchases, but we have to balance each activity to match the spending that has occurred throughout the year. So we meet regularly with the B C P S Budget Committee, and as offices, uh, request to make transfers, uh, the Budget Committee is able to view all of those, um, at the end of each quarter and ask, uh, any questions they might have. And again, this, this is not in anywhere going over budget. It, it's just spending between activities that don't match where we planned to spend in the beginning of the year. We will be. Go ahead.
Will, will you please, uh, again, uh, enumerate the two, uh, expenses that, or the two purchases that you've made that, uh, you know, which is the purpose of this bat?
Um, well, the bat is really the summation of all purchases that have occurred throughout the year, but what we highlight is, uh, those purchases that push the activity to, uh, go over budget. So we requested, uh, five point nine million into Activity Four Instructional Textbooks and Supplies, which provided funds, uh, for F Y twenty-two textbooks of one point two million, the purchase of digital display boards for the classrooms of two point nine million, and principal's reallocation of their per pupil operating funds of one point eight million. Uh, then the second thing identified was six point six million into Activity Eleven, which is Maintenance of Plant. That provided funds required maintenance service contracts of four point nine million, and largely those were where we had to use contractors to fill in, uh, for vacant positions. Bottled water in the schools of nine hundred thousand dollars and the emergency chiller replacement at Deer Park Middle School, which was eight hundred and six thousand dollars.
So what you're saying is that in those categories, uh, you overspent the amount of money that was budgeted?
Uh, well, that was in the adopted budget going into the year. So each, uh, as those expenditures came up, uh, the offices requested to, uh, move money from different activities. Either they had it or we had it elsewhere in the system, um, and then we executed, uh, each of those. So again, they are not over budget. It's just within the activities that are in our budget. And it's, uh, very difficult within a budget our size to get every activity right before the year begins because there's so many unanticipated things that occur throughout the course of the year.
Were those expenditures, uh, then planned in the very beginning of this fiscal year? I mean, was it in the budget that, uh, uh, you, that the school board approved?
In F Y twenty-two, do you mean? No, these are expenditures that were, uh, above plan in those activities. That's why they had to be addressed through the Budget Appropriation Transfer we're, we're speaking of today.
Were any of them requested of the county executive or the council? In other words, were, were you advocating for these, uh, purchases, but it didn't make it in the budget?
Uh, I, I don't believe so. I'd have to go back and look into the, you know, a year and a half ago when everything, uh, got proposed, but these are, uh, generally, uh, things that came up throughout the year.
Did you, uh, for this coming, the twenty twenty-three budget that we approved, uh, were these purchases in that budget?
Um, the, the only part of this I would say that were in the budget are, were requests to, um, increase the value of a number of our different maintenance contracts, and those generally did not make it through the budget process.
Now, uh, to increase the amount of money going to what, again, to?
Our maintenance, various maintenance contracts, um, for repair and maintenance, uh, outside vendors, for technicians, for lawn maintenance, for different preventative maintenance. There's a, a number of, uh, different things. So if we needed to, if the expenditures ended up being at the same level and we were sure, we would go through the same process and be discussing them through the bat at year end. But again, a number, uh, sorry.
Now, th- this isn't a, uh, criticism, but just a statement. I would think with all the money that this county and state are spending to renovate schools, uh, build new schools, et cetera, that we would give priority to maintenance of these buildings. I mean, when you look at, uh, Delaney High School and others, uh, it's not been maintained properly over the years. Uh, that, I assume that that issue is being taken very seriously and will not become an issue in the future.
We, yeah, and we, we hear your, your concern, and, and certainly it's, um, it is important for us to try to maintain our buildings. Uh, we, we're, we're, we're always advocating. We appreciate the support we get from the County Council and from the, and from the state government, and we take opportunities where we do have saving, we have areas of our budget where we have some dollars remaining that we try to, to take care of some of these outstanding maintenance, um, uh, issues. So we're always, we're always looking for ways to utilize our funding to keep our buildings in the best shape, uh, we can. And, and I think we get, we do get a lot of use out of our buildings, certainly.
And I, I, uh, will try not to interpret what you said to mean that, uh, uh, you, uh, take a look at our buildings and there are certain needs for maintenance. And if you have money left over, then you will fund those, uh, uh, maintenance, uh, activities. I, I hope that's not what you meant.
We are, we are, we are in two phases. One, trying to get ahead, and in other areas, you, you know, you, it's something, sometimes there is a, uh, uh, aspect of catching up. But with, it's a combination of both. We're, we're trying to get ahead of things, and we have an opportunity to take care of something that we see in the future could be a problem. Um, we try to head that off when we have opportunities. And certainly there are unexpected things that happen during the course of, of a, of a school year where, you know, something didn't last as long as we thought it would last, and we, we have to then fix it earlier than what we had planned.
Do you have any idea of, uh, what, uh, has there been an inventory done of our buildings, uh, with emphasis on what maintenance is needed, major projects that are needed with each school? Is, is there, has it been such an audit done or study done?
I, probably not the best person to answer that question. Um, I, I believe, having worked in another school system, that that's pretty, uh, pretty much a standard practice on, for that we do have, have, um, have, uh, some sort of, of a list of, of our prioritization of, of, of where, where various buildings are and, and, and what needs to be replaced, uh, scheduling for, for various items, um, to try to stay ahead of.
That, I think, uh, a, a briefing on that subject would be very helpful to the council, uh, because I know one of the, uh, Mr. Blades, my constituent, has the answer. Not surprising, but.
Councilman Catch, I, I, I believe that the My I Pass study, well, the intent of the My I Pass study was to put us on the right track so we can, can get our capital spending aligned with our maintenance need. You'll see that we're gonna get there, you know, a hundred and seventy-six buildings. It's a lot to maintain. And, you know, we have limited county and council, uh, county funding and limited state funding. So, uh, My I Pass will direct, um, our capital spending on getting improvements throughout the system.
But despite the fact that we have, uh, renovated buildings, built new buildings, we still, though, have a, uh, need to go into some of these buildings and make the necessary changes so that in the future, the building doesn't deteriorate because we didn't get the problem in the very beginning. So, uh.
And absolutely, and, and there's no way B C P S would have known that Deer Park Middle Chiller would have gone down at the beginning of the year. You know, we would have budgeted that in the capital budget.
Yeah, okay. Thank, thank you very much.
I know we've come a long way with the air conditioning, so it's very important that we get that fixed. You don't want to be moving backwards. Any additional questions or comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Yes, um, Councilman Crandall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, good evening once again, uh, Mr. Tanliff and Mr. Uh, Hardlove. Um, I'm, I'm gonna put a generalized, uh, question out there. Um, I think to use your own words, uh, Mr. Tanliff, that, um, uh, some of the things that the council found objectionable, uh, in our last vote on the previous, uh, submittal of the bat, uh, that these items were, were removed from this particular bat request. Um, now, should these items, um, alleviate some of our concerns and, um, uh, but we're still not satisfied with the, the, the terms of this revised bat? Can you provide us, uh, some sort of, uh, narrative on if we do not approve this bat? What does that do on a per student basis, per school basis? What, what does that do to your overall budget moving into next year?
Uh, sure, it, it doesn't actually affect the budget for next year, and I'll, uh, mention again, everything we're asking today has already occurred. The spending has already occurred. We're not asking, um, to make any new expenditures. This is really an administrative request to line up each of our activities as the Maryland State Department of Education define them with, uh, to line up the budget with expenditures. It's an administrative exercise that we've gone through every year, and it would be unprecedented if it didn't get approved. Um, the implications are unknown, but, uh, we would certainly be at risk of failing audits because we would, our budget would be upside down in a couple of categories. We'd be overspent. So, um, it's never happened, and it's, uh, simply an administrative approval of what has already occurred throughout the year that we're requesting tonight.
Okay, and I'll just, I'll just ask you to reiterate. So, um, I guess a particular concern of mine that I, I brought up in previous hearings was the, um, the, the five point five million dollars in, um, uh, in the original submittal that would, um, uh, be transferred out of the transportation services funding. Um, that has been removed from this submittal being made here today, uh, for next legislative session. Uh, just to refresh everybody, um, that's listening and to the public and, and for my council, uh, colleagues, um, what happens to that five point five million dollars?
Um, uh, all of our underspending for the year, it doesn't matter what activity it's in, all underspending for the year will drop into our fund balance. Regardless of which activity it started from, it goes into the, uh, fund balance, B C P S. Uh, we showed on our balance sheet, and, uh, the county executive took twenty-five million of it that the council approved as part of our budget, for instance, for capital. Uh, there's thirty-one million in the F Y twenty-three budget that's been re-appropriated for fund balance. Um, and anything that's still left will, uh, be there. It shows up in our CAFR at the end of the year. You can see exactly, um, how much is there from year to year. We can't touch it without approval from both our board and, uh, the County Council. So if there is a need to use some of those funds during the year, we would have to do, uh, mid-year supplemental appropriation that you would, that would come before you, and, uh, you would need to approve.
Okay, well, thank you. I know that's a reiteration of, 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 uh, statements that you've already made to us. I just wanted to, uh, to be clear on it. So thank you, sir.
No problem.
And, uh, if I could, Director Blades, isn't it true that those funds will offset the requests for the next time? We can use those, uh, that fund balance for other items?
Uh, yes, it'll be an available funding source in the F Y twenty-four budget development, but it's also available, um, should anything come up this fiscal year for a supplemental appropriation as necessary.
Okay. All right, uh, any additional questions or comments about the bat? Uh, number one, I think, uh, well, thank you, uh, it's a Tanliff as well as the, uh, B C P S um, for scaling back the bat request, back to the bare basics of what is absolutely necessary as opposed to some of the other items that, uh, my colleagues took exception with. So we thank you for scaling that back, and, uh, I certainly hope we have a favorable, uh, vote on it next week. So, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. Uh, thank you very much, and we will move on to Mr. Andrea Walker.
Thank you.
Bel Air Auto Auction.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of a contract with Bel Air Auto Auction to provide auctioneering and simulcast services for the sale of surplus county-owned vehicles, trucks and equipment on an as-needed basis. The contractor will provide the auctioneering and simulcasting services, um, for our county-owned vehicles and our trucks and our equipment on an as-need basis on behalf of the Office of Budget and Finance, which is our Vehicle Operations Maintenance Division, and on behalf of D P W N T, our Bureau of Highways Division. Uh, this contractor will provide at least one auction per month, including the advertising, and will also provide uh, simultest, simulcasting so that enabled bidders not physically present at the auction can bid through the internet. V O M estimates that they will have approximately two hundred and fifty vehicles, including, um, automobiles, police vehicles, and light trucks and vans per year, and E O M, which is here in D P W N T, estimates approximately fifty special-purpose vehicles, uh, and pieces of heavy equipment. This contract will commence upon council approval and will continue for one year uh, with, um, renewals for additional one-year periods with an option to extend the initial term or any renewal term in addition. the initial term or any renewal term and additional hundred and twenty days. This contract does not have a specific maximum compensation for the initial one-year term. I'll take any questions that you may have.
Well, I thank you very much for uh, your presentation. Any questions or comments from the members? All right, Ms. Walker. Uh, thank you very, very much. Let me take a look at where we are. Next we'll move on with Ms. Walker for the Eagle Transfer Station.
Good afternoon again. The administration brings forth Resolution twenty-six twenty-two, which amends the Baltimore County Ten-Year Solid Waste Management Plan from twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-eight regarding a proposed private solid waste acceptance facility at seventy-six hundred Roland Mill Road, better known as Eagle Transfer Station. Specifically, this amendment proposed, uh, by this rev- resolution would add language regarding the Eagle Transfer Station to our Chapter Five of our plan. A Chapter Five is speci- specifically Schedule of New Systems and Facilities Section. Among other things, this regulation requires that the county council and the county executive approve any amendment to the Solid Waste Management Plan before the prospective owner or operator of a transfer facility may apply for the required Maryland Department of Environment permit. Final approval to operate such a facility is contingent on an M D E permit. Um, the transfer station as proposed would accept would it, would accept both municipal solid waste as well as construction demolition material from the greater Baltimore region and will be financed through a private capital. Eagle Transfer Station primarily will transfer materials to disposal sites. The operator owner estimates that approximately five percent of the total material will be recovered for recycling. That's about sixty-five hundred tons per year of C and D. Um, the owner estimates that the facility will process approximately a hundred and forty-three thousand tons of material each year, which is equivalent to about five hundred tons a day. The cost of this, uh, proposed transfer station is entirely covered by the property owner. And this is coming to you as required by COMAR twenty-six point oh three point oh three point oh five, uh, where it says the Baltimore County Planning Board and the Department of Planning held a public hearing on a proposed amendment on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. And the planning board approved the Eagle Transfer Station Amendment on March third. D P W N T also accepted comments for this public facility for a thirty-five day comment period, which ended on March twenty-fourth. So as required by COMAR, we are submitting, uh, this proposed amendment uh, to you all for review and approval. I will take any questions that you have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Councilman Catch?
Yeah, uh, DeAndrea, um, if this wasn't before us at this time, uh, this, uh, trash and recycling would be handled within the county, correct?
So this transfer station is a privately owned transfer station.
Yeah, well, let, let's say it doesn't exist. Okay? Doesn't exist. Uh, what is going to go on, uh, if it doesn't exist? What, what happens to the trash and the recyclables? What would happen?
If it does not exist, our commercial haulers can go to any per-minute facility and move their trash.
Do, uh, does the county earn revenue, uh, by handling this waste, uh, ourselves?
When a commercial hauler comes through one of our three transfer stations, they pay an eight-dollar tipping fee.
Okay, so, uh, do we know, uh, have we estimated how much revenue uh, the county will not have any longer should this, uh, contract be approved?
What I can tell you is that there is no requirement for a commercial hauler to come through Baltimore County transfer stations. Our ten-year solid waste plan specifically says in Chapter Five of our ten-year solid waste plan, it specifically says that, let me read it for you so that you so that I'm being clear as to why I can't give you a number. Commercial materials. In Chapter Three, I'm sorry, in Chapter Three of our ten-year solid waste plan, under Commercial Materials, page six, Commercial Materials are those materials generated by businesses, including stores and offices, and collected by private haulers who contract directly with businesses regarding collection type, frequency, et cetera. These private haulers are not under the county's control and may deliver trash and/or recyclables to any properly permitted disposal processing site they choose so long as the site accepts them. In-county sites accepting commercial trash include the WAH, the CAF, E S L. It goes on further to say, out of county, but within the region, trash acceptance sites include Willabrader, Annapolis Junction Rail Transfer Station in Andorono County. And these private haulers can also deliver trash and/or recyclables to other in-county, out-of-county, or even out-of-state sites. So I can't very well, sir, give you a number because any commercial hauler can go to any transfer site as long as they've been permitted. They don't have to come through Baltimore County transfer sites.
Do we know how much revenue was generated for Baltimore County, uh, from the, uh, uh, you know, getting rid of this trash and recyclables? Do we know?
Last year.
Yes.
Last year, we generated one point six million, eight dollars per tonne that came through our three transfer sites.
And what, uh, with this new transfer station, uh, what percent of the, uh, waste would they handle?
This transfer site, according to the permit that they are applying for, they are requesting to move let me pull it out of the amendment, a hundred and forty-three thousand tons.
Now, uh, how much, uh, did the county, uh, how many tons of, uh, trash did, uh, the county in total, uh, get rid of?
So you want to know how much residential trash and commercial trash has been moved through the county?
Yes.
I think we have a number of, what, four hundred thousand tonnes?
I also have on the line with me my Bureau Chief for Solid Waste, Nick Rodriguez is on the call. Nick, do you know the exact number of tonnage?
So through our transfer stations, it's upwards of six hundred thousand tonnes of residential and commercial trash. So that doesn't include things like recyclables or metals or anything like that, but it's upwards of six hundred thousand tonnes.
So one could conclude that if you're taking a hundred forty-three tonnes away from the six hundred, that the one point six million generated in revenues would be reduced?
Correct. That's if, that's if the, if the price is cheaper than ours. If the, uh, if the people that are making the decision where they want to go decide to go there, uh, I guess, you know, as I understand it, people always have an option to go somewhere else. So if someone is cheaper than us today, they have to take into consideration how far they have to haul it to get a cheaper price and look at the gas and the time and make a determination. They're closer to, they're closer to Howard County today, they can go to Howard County.
So it, it appears that in the twenties, maybe twenty, I don't know, um, twenty percent, under twenty percent of the revenue, just look at the numbers, could be lost.
Well.
Uh, Mr. Chair, may I weigh in, please?
Uh, after Mr. Rodriguez, he looked like he had something to say.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so the, the proposed tonnage at the transfer station, any county is eligible for that trans, for that capacity, right? So the a hundred and forty-three thousand, any county could use that tonnage. Commercial haulers from anywhere could go in there. So the likelihood that it only comes from Baltimore County, um, like Mr. Jones was saying, would depend on the rates. Um, it would depend on convenience. Um, so it depends on lots of things. Our commercial haulers at the moment, they have other options. This is only an additional option, but it just happens to be within Baltimore County.
And that, so that, uh, waste transfer, uh, facility handles Baltimore County waste plus other subdivisions?
The, the proposed facility could handle, um, commercial trash from other, other jurisdictions, yes. And would?
Where do, uh, okay, so where would Baltimore County, okay, if we're going to accept uh, this trash, uh, at this facility, where does that trash end up?
Um, so it would be, it depends how they get rid of it. It may be, uh, put on trucks or it likely would go out by rail. That's the proposal. So it would end up at landfills in Virginia, commercial landfills.
And such a contract has not been agreed upon yet?
Uh, I, I don't know.
So putting the cart before the horse? I mean, I, I, I don't think we want a situation where we're going to take this waste and put it in our own landfills.
It would not come to our landfill.
It would not.
Okay, okay.
But don't, excuse me, but don't we, do we already do that, Ms. Walker? Don't we take, uh, trash from Hartford County to the Eastern, uh, Sanitary Station in Baltimore County?
Yes, ma'am.
So we do do that already?
Yes, ma'am.
So, uh, uh, um, Ms. Rogers?
Well, I was trying to make the point of the, the projections. There has been a mu- a number of banter about one point four million, uh, dollars in lost revenue. But when you look at that from the standpoint of this proposed entity and what their total capacity would be, that would, is like saying all of our haulers who bring trash and, and transfer trash to our facilities would be taking and going to this, this other facility, which is highly unlikely. Mr. Rodriguez, uh, and, and the team, we talked about this. There is, there's no likelihood that we would, that haulers who transfer trash with us right now will be the exclusive clientele of this new entity. The other piece, um, Councilmember Catch, in terms of car before the horse, you have to remember, we're not the final decision makers on this. The only way this entity can even go forward with further consideration, the way, the way the, the process is, is to be, we have to add them to an amendment uh, in our plan in order for them to be further considered by the state. We're not the final decision makers. Even, even if this was approved, uh, to be added to our amendment, the state very well could say no. I mean, because we don't make the decision on whether this, this, uh, facility comes up. The third point I would make is, right now, the closest rail stations, transfer stations are in Anarundi, Anarundo and Howard, um, Montgomery Counties. So any, uh, hauler in the region, say, north of here, Cecil, Hartford, this rail station would be much closer in terms of, um, you know, travel time, mileage, et cetera, than what Anarondo, uh, and Montgomery is. That was one of the, the questions that we asked. When, when we benchmarked on, you know, what is the, what is the benefit locally and regionally? Those were some of the questions that we asked, but it's not our decision.
Now, let me, let me, Councilman Catch, can I jump in for a minute? I guess have, listen, I've heard a lot of stuff, I've read a lot of stuff, and I'm trying to get, I don't want to get lost in the weeds. I have basically three questions. Given everything people have been saying, I like to explain, why do we want to approve this transfer station? Why do we want to approve the Eagle Transfer Station when, from what I'm told, others have been denied? And then why do we need to do it now? So why, why Eagle? Why now?
Good, good.
Agreed.
Okay.
That's got you three simple questions. Why do we need to do it? Why do we need to do it now? And why do we need to use Eagle if we turned others down in the past?
So three things.
Mr. Chair, I concur.
Sorry, I'm happy to back you up.
And you all can take, pick who wants to answer it.
So I will, I will tell you the three questions that you asked. Why? Why do we want to approve it now? It's your choice. If you don't want to approve it now, you don't have to approve it now. I've moved it forward because Baltimore County would like another alternative to move in our commercial trash. It's more environmentally sustainable to move it via rail. But there's nothing that says that you have to approve it now. A request came in, we reviewed it. We could use an alternative method to move in trash. But if you don't want to approve it, no harm, no foul.
Mr. Chairman?
We, 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 all right, give me one second, one second. Dare with me?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, just if I, if I might just follow up on your question to that answer, if I could?
I mean, I don't think that answer was complete.
Right, right.
I wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to complete the three. I mean, I know we have a choice, but why, why now? Why Eagle?
Right. Mr. Chairman, I one thousand think your question nailed it because like I, I'm personally trying to understand, you know, what, what the, the urgency is on, on, on this one, looking at what the capacity that we currently have, you know, uh, basically we continue to have much more capacity, more than maybe twice as much as the Eagle Transfer Station could bring online. So not, I mean, that very first question is, well, you know, what, the big picture, what, what's the urgency and, and, and why, why are we doing this at, at this moment in time? Like try, really try and understand the big picture because I, I'm, I'm, I'm having trouble just even understanding the big picture on this one. So I appreciate the question, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Ms. Walker, for giving us more detail.
Mr. Rodriguez, do you have anything to add?
You want, I was.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Walker. I'm sorry. Go right ahead. I apologize.
Okay, so big picture. When this amendment came in, we didn't do anything. We were holding it for the five-year solid waste plan. For the five-year solid waste plan, if you look in, if you look at our ten, ten-year solid waste plan, our ten-year solid waste plan in Chapter Five, on page five, it clearly said that we had the capacity in our landfill up to twenty fifty-two. Sitting here today, our landfill will fill up by twenty twenty-seven. So when the, this option came before us, knowing that our landfill will fill up, knowing that we need other alternatives, this was a good alternative to move more trash out of Baltimore County.
Okay. And I guess the only other part, the why, I think we heard. Why now, I think we heard, and now why Eagle?
Eagle was the one who proposed it. I have also heard that someone else proposed. I I don't have, I don't have any paperwork that someone else proposed. If they did before I came here, I don't have that paperwork. I made this on the merits of what came before me while I was sitting here.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, let me make sure, uh, wait, Councilman Marks, and then I'll go with Ms. Rogers and Mr. Rodericks, if you have any, any additional information or Ms. Walker, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you so much. Councilman Marks, and then Ms. Rogers.
Yeah, thank you. And I know these are tough issues. I know that Councilman Patoka, Ms. Rogers, and Ms. Walker, you were on a work group that looked at solid waste management. These aren't glamorous issues, but they're they're fundamental issues we have to address. I mean, I guess the one point I would make is that, yes, the Eastern Sanitary Landfill is filling up, but they're looking at vertical expansion that will increase that lifespan by at least eleven years, correct, Ms. Walker?
I am looking at all strategies, zero waste strategy, vertical, horizontal. I'm feverishly trying to put together a plan to address the landfill. And it's anticipated being filled by twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, and I I get it. I just, I guess my point is, there are ways to expand the capacity of ESL in the immediate future. So that's just the point I was making.
Okay, Ms. Rogers?
Um, Councilmember Jones, thank you. I just wanted to add two points. If you look in the solid waste work group recommendations in there, it stated that we, it recommended that we should begin immediately transferring out a hundred and sixty thousand tons of waste. That was based on twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two. The value or the estimated amount of money that we needed to do that was upwards of nine million dollars, which, when we went through the budget process, we did not have. We had hoped to, and we we were initially told that we may be able to use ARPA money to try to help start transferring trash out. In twenty sixteen, the county stopped transferring trash out. And so that added to the the expedited filling up of the of the landfill. Because of the pandemic, we also had increased trash in the fall, you know, just unprecedented trash. So here we had the situation of the twenty, of the hundred and sixty thousand tons that was recommended for us to begin to transfer out again, that we didn't have the revenues to do. Plus, in twenty twenty, there was an RFP that was put on the street at the behest of the former solid waste chief that had a subsection in it about a rail transfer. The value, the estimated cost, based on the solid waste plan, said that a rail, that a rail transfer, if we established that, the estimated cost was twenty-nine million dollars. For whatever reason, the former solid waste chief requested that we pull that RFP off the street, which we did, but the question to me is, if the solid waste work group recommendations, and this is all, you know, public documentation, you know, urged us to transfer, begin to transfer trash out again, the solid waste work group recommendations recommended, considering rail or other ways of tran- transfer out and gave a cost, the, the RFP that the county put on the street and then pulled back, had a rail transfer station in it. I'm wondering, you know, what, what was the thinking? We're told one thing and then we we did something else, but it is clear that the projections on the landfill filling up, it's a lot closer than it was when the ten-year plan was written.
Well, I I that was another question I had. I wanted to get through the big picture, but that was going to be my question, how did we lose twenty-five years of a capacity at the landfill? And you're saying in two thousand fifteen or seventeen, we stopped transferring trash out. I certainly remember us having an influx. If, you know, during COVID, it was like spring cleaning all the time, and everybody was home, and we had to literally shut down our refuge collection sites because they were being inundated. And because of public demand, we had to open them back up. So I certainly remember that. But is that, that's the answer why we lost the twenty-five years? Do I have that right?
It would can, it would contribute to it because a hundred and sixty thousand tons that were not being transferred out anymore. This was the prior administration. That that trash that had historically been going out was now going in. The ten-year plan did not anticipate that. The ten-year plan did not anticipate the county no longer transferring some trash out. So I would have to say that that had an impact on why we don't, we don't have twenty-five years.
Now, now, why did we stop transferring the trash out?
That's a decision that the prior administration made.
Okay.
We have not been given a firm rationale as to why, but we do have the records of when it stopped.
Well, I'm sure Nick was here. You were here before, right, Nick? You're not a political appointee, are you?
No, I'm, I'm not, but I was not back, I was not here that far back. But I I can say, I mean, I do have our records and I've looked at them extensively. For example, like, in January of twenty fourteen, just for context, we put a hundred and ninety tons into the landfill. In January of this year, I put over seventeen hundred tons into the landfill. So the amount of tonnage that has gotten to the landfill has increased precipitously over the last several years, and specifically over the last three or four years, which has put us in this position, mostly because that transfer was not, not budgeted. The only other thing I will, would add to this, this whole conversation is, I don't know if everybody realizes there's two different buckets. There's commercial and residential trash. Right now, my sites handle both commercial and residential trash, and a lot of it. But my priority is always residential trash. I will pick up and process residential trash before everything else and after everything else. It's the most important thing. But when we can't process the commercial trash for any reason, maybe I have to shut a floor down to do repairs or something like that, that commercial trash needs an outlet. It has to go someplace because it's your restaurants, it's your buildings, it's, you know, it's other things within the county. And it does, it does need an outlet. So this provides us an opportunity to handle that tonnage so that we're not so burdened with the commercial trash at the same transfer stations that are responsible for our residential trash. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that our three transfer stations are responsible for all of it.
Okay, but I guess to be clear, you say we. This will be a private entity. Right now, they go somewhere. If we can't handle them, they go wherever.
Correct.
Correct.
It's not like we're gonna handle it. Somebody else is, I mean, they just may have another place to go.
Yes, correct. But there are not that many alternatives, so it does provide them someplace to go because it is still is still trash generated from within Baltimore County.
Okay.
Yep.
Any, go ahead, Councilman Quirk.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is it true that the the county is doing it currently, as we speak, more of a waste audit currently? Are we undertaking a big picture waste audit at the moment?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
Okay, so just an, just an obvious question is, well, why would we consider doing something like this until we have the results of the waste audit? I mean, why not look at the results of the waste audit and then come back and revisit this to make sure, does this really make sense or not? Like, to me, that seems like a logical question.
Well, the wa- the waste audit will be for our residential trash, so it'll give us an idea of what is in our residential waste stream, not the commercial waste stream.
Well, how how much of a, you know, I I clearly have a very little understanding of solid waste, but how, talk to me about the impact of the the commercial side of this versus the residential. I mean, what, what, what are we looking at perspective-wise? Punish, for example.
Yeah. So last year, we did around three hundred and fifty thousand tons of residential, and we did just over two hundred thousand tons of commercial.
Now, now, I know the administration's really big on having outside consultants come in, look at really big picture, double-check what we're doing, besides the the waste audit, or, oh, this is a huge deal. So do we have some type of outside consultant that is working with us on this or, or looking at this along with us? Or do we usually bring in outside consultants on on a lot of the really big, big picture stuff? So are we also doing that?
Now, this was a, any private entity can come if they want to start a business in Baltimore County, but COMR requires that if it is a transfer facility or a solid waste facility, there's certain criteria that requires that they come through this process before they can get the permit from MDE. So this is simply coming through this process because it's a requirement of COMR.
Okay.
Councilman Quirk, we did have a consultant that helped facilitate the solid waste work group.
That's right.
For clarification.
Okay, so I I do have another question. Listen, I understand we want to have options. I understand all of that. But, you know, one of the things that jumped out at me was this idea, are we considering an enterprise fund concept that will result in additional taxes to the citizens?
Um, Councilmember Jones, or Chairman Jones, that was one of the recommendations that was in the solid waste work plan. I mean, the solid waste work group recommendations, we have not acted on that, that recommendation at this point in time. We are, we're, we're working through the various recommendations. You know, there, there's nineteen recommendations in, in that study, but that is not one that we have endeavored to address at this point in the juncture.
Well, I would hope you take a red pen and scratch through it because I I I find it, you know, you have to be, have some very compelling reasons if you're telling me we want to somehow add some additional fees to the citizens.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, go ahead, Councilman Quirk.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the auditors' questions, you know, definitely important, big picture, really trying to truly understand this better. It's, it's very complex and there's a lot of details I don't pretend to even, even understand, but I guess, how has, how has the county changed its policies related to commercial solid waste since the council adopted the county's ten-year solid waste management plan in twenty eighteen? So I mean, that's going back to sort of the original chairman's question of the the why. So just try and understand the, the big picture. Yeah, how how have our policies really changed since we adopted the ten-year plan in twenty eighteen?
We have not changed any commercial solid waste policies. There's no recommendation to change commercial solid waste policies in our update to our ten-year solid waste plan. When our audit, our waste audit comes back, if it tells me something different at that time, I will make a recommendation, but at this time, there's no, there's nothing on, on the table to change any commercial solid waste policies.
But but on, on the residential ultimately leads to an enterprise fund. It might, I mean, I think so. And if that's the case, ultimately might lead to additional cost to the, the taxpayer. Is that correct? Versus.
I haven't had any conversations about an enterprise fund besides the conversations that were had with the work group, when the work group was talking about an enterprise fund, but there's been no conversations in DPWNT about an enterprise fund.
But the work group recommended it.
It, it was a conversation in the work group. Yes, it was.
Okay. Any, just, I know we have a couple of speakers, so why don't we?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Councilman Crand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the thorough conversation on this. I think there's a, it's a complicated issue. I just wanted to draw attention to some questions that the auditor's department had advised us on, and I'm assuming that Ms. Walker and her team are aware of these questions at all as well. So we're, we're assuming that the, the quote speculative fiscal impact of the proposed ten-year amendment would be one point one four million dollars based upon the estimated capacity of the proposed transfer station. Then the highly unlikely assumption that a hundred percent of commercial lenders transferring through the station would be from Baltimore County. What happens if this particular facility exceeds that capacity? Are we then going to, now that we're, we're setting this precedent, that we would then be going out to bid on further transfer facilities?
Their permit that, according to the documentation that was given to us, their permit is requesting to be able to transfer a hundred and forty-three thousand tons, which we did the one point one million based on eight dollars times a little bit less than a hundred and forty-three thousand because sixty-five hundred of those hundred and forty-three thousand tons is for C and D. So we multiplied the eight by by a little, by a hundred and thirty thousand tons, and that's how we came up with the one point one. So we gave the maximum amount that could be revenue-based if they charged eight dollars per ton. That's how we came up with the one point one.
Okay, but they're charging, they're charging us seven fifty per ton, correct?
They, they, they haven't started yet. We don't know how much they're gonna charge per ton.
So, well, wait, we don't know, we don't know what we're gonna be charged per ton at this, at Eagle?
It's not us that would be charged, though.
Yeah.
That's, that's the point. It's a private operation, and MDE has to license them before they could put together what they're going to, you know, their operation. And that's the point we're trying to make. It's a total independent operation for us. It's just another alternative to get to move trash. It does, it is not our funding, it's not our operation, it's, it is absolutely not, you know, licensed or anything by us. It just physically sits in Baltimore County because that's the site that this particular private developer came to us to say, I want to do this. The state requires that I come through the county. It's a separate, independent entity from us.
Okay. To, okay, and I want to go back to something that Councilman Quirk alluded to, which is a a, an audit progress report is due to MDE in July of twenty twenty-two, and we're a couple days away from that. Are we potentially moving too quickly toward a facility like this, an arrangement like this, without knowing what that progress report looks like?
Well, the waste audit is an audit of our residential trash, that our trash that goes into our landfill. It's not an audit on commercial, it's not an audit on commercial trash coming through the county. It's an audit of what's in our landfill. What is it made up of? Is it made up of food mostly? Is it made up of Is it made up of organics? What is it made? Is it made up of yard material? That's what that waste audit is to to tell me what's going into the ground. So that I can focus my strategy on, do we do more composting? Do we look at more, um, organic material? Do we do backyard composting? Do we do food organics? That's what that, that's what that waste audit tells me, a more specific idea of what is coming in so that I can focus my strategies.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't that information uh, better inform those decisions before we read an amendment?
So this is
particular resolution?
So this is just one amendment. Amendments, we have two more amendments that's coming right behind this. The amendments come to us because Colmar says for them to come to us. We have two more amendments that's coming, that's in the approval process right now. One for um medical waste and one for organics.
Okay.
The pri- the 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 issue here is the private people come with these proposals because Colmar says they have to. We don't, we don't um set the timing for when they come because again, um, we, when this was initially, this discussion initially started, we said we want to wait and see what our solid waste work group recommendations are to see if that even makes viable sense. And if you look at the solid waste work group recommendations, it does, because there was a, there was a section in there about considering doing a rail transfer station, but the the cost associated with that, the projected cost that the consultants gave us was twenty-nine million dollars, which was like something we can't take on that cost. So we have to, we have to look at all the alternatives. But as Director Walker just said, these other entities are coming uh with proposals about uh, like medical waste, for example. They're coming for proposals. It's not something that's factored into what we're doing. They just have to come through us because Colmar requires them to. And they come to the table in their time, you know, but but again, the the decision about whether or not this can even go to M D E, this this particular private contractor who wants to do this can go to M D E. That's what the decision is at the county level.
Can I ask one question, Councilman Crandall? Let me, let me slide in here based off of what you said and what the auditor said. And I'm just thinking to myself, so they're applying for a permit that's going to give them the right to transfer a hundred and forty-three million tons. No, a hundred forty-three thousand.
Thousand, yeah, thousand tons.
So tell me, is this a good scenario? Number one, if they find out that, number one, they undercut us on the price, they drop the price down to five dollars, and they become extremely efficient, they're working twenty-four hours a day. What would happen if they were able to transfer three hundred thousand tons? Do they have to get another permit? That, do they guess make an amendment? Do we have anything to do with that permit? If they say, you know what, we asked for a permit for a hundred and forty-three thousand, but my goodness, we're so good, we're doing three hundred thousand.
They'd have to go back to the state, Councilmember Jones. Now, whether they'd have to come back through us for an amendment, we'd have to check on that because their initial request to even develop this facility comes through us. But we'll check on whether um a change in their, their permitting, but they can't take in what they're permitted for.
Okay. So here's my, here's my next question. Let's say they are extremely efficient. They are extremely effective. They work in twenty-four hours a day, and they realize that they have the capacity to transfer five hundred thousand tons. And they're undercutting us on the price. And they go back to the state to say, we want to uh transfer two times, three times what our initial uh uh permit says. And let's just say, is it a good thing for Baltimore County or a bad thing if they're able to transfer four hundred thousand tons?
Well, if they take trash away that doesn't have to go into our landfill, that's a good thing. And we don't have to pay for it, and and we don't have to pay for it. We didn't have to pay to build the facility, which is projected at, um, according to the the work group uh recommendations at twenty-nine million, and we're able to transfer out, as the work group recommendations uh said, that we should be transferring out about a hundred and sixty thousand tons a year, which we're not at the moment because we don't have the cash flow to to transfer that out. That's why we're working on all types of uh alternatives. Vertical expansion, all of this takes time because we had to go back and get permitted, but if trash is going out of the county and not going into um our last remaining landfill, I would have to say that's a good thing.
Okay.
And we don't have to pay for it.
Any other comments?
Chair, I didn't, I didn't conclude my questions.
Go ahead, Councilman Crandall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I apologize. Thank you for your indulgence.
So, no problem. Um, uh, so, um, and maybe, uh, Mr. Roudrichs can can help me with this answer. So this uh this transfer facility would be located in the seventh district, my district. Can I get some sort of indication of uh what operations look like, what they sound like? Is this a twenty-four-seven operation? Um, are are these um trash trucks being dumped directly into a uh a rail container? Uh, or uh, do you create a landfill and then skid loaders then load them, load the material into the, into the contini- containers? I mean, how how does the actual operation at these facilities? How do they actually work? And what is the the impact on the surrounding uh community? Because this is uh, this is located uh very near a residential area.
Sure. Uh, yeah, I can't speak too much to exactly what their particular operation looks like, but a transfer station in general, no trash is is kept on site. Um, you know, most transfer stations have permits that require them to clear the floor uh at night. I don't know about the requirements, um, whether they are proposing a twenty-four-seven operation, um, maybe Director Walker does, but there's no trash stored um there. It's put into, in this case, I believe the proposal is for rail cars. So it's put on a floor, it is transferred into a rail car, and it is sent to a landfill um out of the county.
Do we have any indication of 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 how much truck traffic this creates for a certain road?
I don't know, sir.
Okay, is it, is it possible uh for the administration to to um uh look into that and into a little bit more detail before Monday?
Yes, sir.
Questions as far as, as as far as local, local environmental noise and traffic impact?
We can um try to benchmark uh House McCranes with Anarundel County and Montgomery to see what they have. They have rail operations there. Uh, but we'll try to do do our best to try to gather that information in terms of. So what you want to know is truck volume, uh, noise?
Cleanliness, truck volume, noise. Um, is this, is it a twenty-four-seven kind of operation? Um, and um I gue- I guess just anticipating other questions of, um, does this increase uh rail flow through these rail lines that go through that property?
Okay, we'll, we'll um work on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I I'd imagine you just have to figure out how much can a truck carry? And then back into that, extrapolate into that uh a hundred and forty-three thousand tons. But why don't we, uh, any additional questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just a couple, a couple others. Honestly, this whole thing is, um, it's just almost like not being anywhere even closer and pretending to understand this topic. It's complex. Um, there's a lot of moving pieces to it. Um, but I just find that questions are leading to to more questions and leading to more questions, like, does the county get annual revenues from um our commercial trash? And if so, does anybody know how much they are?
From commercial, commercial, yes, sir.
One point six million.
How much?
One point six million.
Is is that the number?
Yes.
That was stated earlier.
One point six million is what we receive annually from our commercial trash?
It fluctuates depending on how many tons, but last year it was one point six million because it's eight dollars per ton. We only get, we get eight dollars per ton that comes through our transfer station. Currently, that's the, that's the agreement with the two operators who operate the the um transfer stations.
Well, is it, is it true, based on a twenty twenty-one final report of the solid waste work group, where a paid consultant that one of the best practices was um to according to the solid waste plan against private transfer stations? Is 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 that one of the best practices not to use the private transfer stations? Or no? Is that true or no?
I don't recall that um it was recommended not. It was recommended to consider a uh transfer station, but I'll have to go back and check on that specific detail. I don't recall our being told that it should be a government-operated transfer station.
Yeah, I mean, I
Look.
Could be, could be wrong, but I thought one of the best practices would be doing the opposite of what we're trying to do with this, um, according to the study, but I could be wrong.
I, um, I also remember, um, Quirk, I'll, I'll be happy to look. All we knew, all what we were fixated on was the development of a new transfer station costs, a projected cost being twenty-nine million dollars. I mean, that was just like out of the, you know, out of the reach for for us as an option because we're still trying to look at where can we get nine to ten million dollars to transfer out a hundred and sixty thousand tons or resume? Let me emphasize that, resume transferring our trash. If we can't get nine or ten million to transfer our trash, how we, how are we going to build a twenty-nine million dollar tr- new transfer station?
Right. No, it's it's something almost, I feel like I could um sit down and 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 look at this for hours, really understanding, trying to understand the big picture, because I mean, it seems like, like there's not a transfer cap- capacity shortage. There's a uh more of a, uh, I mean, you know, a dispose, a disposal um capacity. There's a disposal capacity issue, but not a transfer capacity shortage.
Let's get right, getting tran- getting trash out as opposed to having it go in the uh the landfill. But private people come, you know, we're, we've checked the records. It it predates me, but when probably, private people come with uh projects that have to basically come through the county because Colmar says so, they come forward with with their ideas.
It seems to me, and I'll talk to Ed Blades offline about this, but it seems in the final analysis, moving down this path shifts some of the cost uh more to the taxpayer, probably through uh eventual enterprise fund. I mean, and maybe I'm wrong on that, but I'll, I'll try to get better understanding the the money movement with uh with that Blades. I'll give him a call and try to figure it out. But that, to me, it all ultimately like feels like this ultimately is going to wind up costing the 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 taxpayer more money than than what they're uh paying at the moment. But I I'll, I'll work on that. I'll look at the numbers with the
Well, I would say for this private transfer station, there's no, there's no government money involved in it. We just have to, unfortunately, from the standpoint of process, we're the fiduciary in terms of not in the financial sense, but the obligation is to come through the county to get to the state.
Right, but but ultimately, it's whether the money's coming from a general fund or whether it's coming from an enterprise fund. In my opinion, in the final analysis, the taxpayer is going to pay for it. You know, one way or the other, um, and 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 maybe through an inevitable enterprise fund, if if I'm, if I'm thinking about the numbers the right way. So whether we want to say it's coming from the general revenues or not, it's ultimately going to cost more money to the taxpayer, I think. And I could be wrong. I'll check, I'll, I'll, I'll talk offline with Ed Blades on that one.
Well, Councilman Pachoca went through this painstakingly with us, so he he was there and had the same sticker shock that we had when it came to a new transfer station that we, that we would uh develop. That, that, that number still sticks in my head very vividly.
Just we're working through this between now and the the vote to really try to understand it um that better. I just have a lot, still a lot of questions, but this has been good. Thank you.
I do have uh one more question. Um, I was a little confused about this. So there's this thing called flow controls that are an administratively efficient tool for local governments to plan for solid waste management system. So can you explain to me the benefit of the the flow controls? I I mean, I, I can infer, I can figure out what it means, but I'm just thinking, why do we want to control it? Why don't we guess want it to open the floodgates and get rid of as much as we can? So number one, can you explain me what the flow controls is and why it's important? And then number two, what happens if next month, five other people come along and say they want to put on a transfer station? Do we approve them as well?
Well, I'm going to defer to Mr. Roudrichs on the flow control. But with respect to other, we have these other two um solid waste issues coming that we're analyzing right, right now to have to determine do we put those forward? It's, it's not a rail station, but it is about disposal. It's about medical waste disposal.
Okay.
All of the, all of the private stuff has to come through the county um solid waste plan. It's, it's interesting how 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 to get a state permit, you got to come to the county.
Well, I'd imagine, I mean, explain to me this flow controls and why we guess, why do we have it? Why, why wouldn't we want to guess get rid of everything?
Well, um, yeah, so flow control is is um, it's been upheld by a Supreme Court case. It basically allows a jurisdiction to control the waste within its borders in order for maybe, say, a state wants to build an incinerator and they need a promise of a certain amount of M S W to go there. They're allowed to control the waste within that in order to subsidize that facility. Maryland is what's called a home rule state, which means that independent jurisdictions can make decisions on flow control for themselves. Baltimore County has operated under some flow control principles, but we are not a flow-controlled county. So if a commercial hauler picks up waste in Baltimore County, they are free to drive to Anarundel County to dispose of it. There is no ordinance that says that they can't go do that. So, for example, if this facility were to be cited in Baltimore City, where they would pay Baltimore City taxes, there's nothing that says that a Baltimore County hauler, if the rate was appealing, couldn't drive into the city, use the facility, and return to Baltimore County. That's for the commercial trash. Our residential trash, everything that's picked up on a resident's street corner comes through our facility because that is, you know, that that is the service we offer to the residents uh of the county. Commercial trash is handled differently.
Okay, I think I understand the flow control.
It's, it's a little complicat- it's a complicated subject, but that's the gist of it, yeah.
Okay, and right now, as I understand it, other jurisdictions around us are cheaper than eight anyway, right? Some, some are, some are not?
Cheaper than eight. Um, I'd, I'd, I don't know. So the commercial rate that a commercial hauler pays at our sites is um what they pay us is eight dollars.
Right.
Um, it's possible that other jurisdictions are cheaper. I I would have to look into it.
Of course, Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman, what the total cost is to that hauler is based on uh, the, the entity that's operating right now. We have two contractors that operate. We have two contractors that operate the transfer station.
So the eight dollars, is that, is that our profit? Eight dollars is that the actual cost?
That's our share of, of the cost. That's not the actual cost. That's not the only thing that they pay. That's what the two operators give us in terms of, you know, that is a government facility, it has to be maintained, et cetera. This is something, these contracts were put in place way before we got here.
Okay, uh, why don't we do this since we have a couple of callers, a couple of speakers? Let's hear from them. I think we only have two. And then if there's additional comments or questions uh from the members, uh, we'll, we'll um we'll open the floor back up. Ms. Vel Castro?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, our first speaker for this item this evening is Beth Miller. I believe she's on by phone. Ms. Miller?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for holding, Ms. Miller.
No problem. I'm sorry. I just ate a peanut and it's kind of stuck in my throat.
As long as you don't have an allergy, we're okay.
Oh, I don't have an allergy. I've just got a very dry throat. So I'll try. I don't have a lot to say because I'm more confused now than I was before this started. Um, this discussion started. I will just say that what I'm hearing um is in direct contradiction to things that I, testimony I've seen from former employees of Baltimore County. That there's a conflation of disposal and transfer capacities, that there is more than enough extra transfer capacity available. Um, and the disposal problem is a different problem. Um, and then um, I guess I'm also confused how um this would not be a um request for proposal from various bidders. Why this is sort of granting a monopoly to a single entity uh to, to begin this private process? And I've heard them talk about how it goes through the county to the state, but um, you know, that these, these proposals just come and then um the, the county is obligated to decide. Uh, but it, I, I guess I'm questioning, is that the only way this process happens? Is there also a process whereby the county makes a decision that they want to have private transfer stations and then there's a bidding process uh to obtain those private operators? Um, so that, I guess I have more questions than testimony at this point, and I thank you for, for listening.
Well, Ms. Miller, I, I thank you so much for your uh indulgence and your attention to this matter. Uh, clearly you raised a couple of good questions about the capacity and why not place it on a bid? Do, does anybody want to answer that or shall we just keep going?
Well, Mr. Um Chair, we did put out an RFP in the um, the late summer that was due to um be completed. Um, this was twenty twenty. I get my years mixed up. It had a transfer station in it. It, it, that, that bit was there, but the former, this was before Mr. Roderick's. The, the former uh chief of solid waste requested that we pull it off, pull that, that RFP off. So there was a, there was a quote-unquote competitive uh RFP that was out there around transfer stations. That's why it's puzzling to me about this. It was certainly in there. I have the, the um canceled RFP. I'm happy to share the full document. We, we, we shared um some excerpts from it with the, with the, the audit of staff. So there is a way to do it. But the issue about this stuff that goes through the state, this is a private entity who wants to do something, and because Comar says, well, before you can come to us, MDE to finalize this consideration, you have to go through the, the um county process. So how are we the county control? We, we don't have control over that. If a private entity wants to be considered for something, we have to look and see, well, does it make sense? And we did, when we did the benchmarking against other jurisdictions and we knew that we had a, a recommendation around a transfer uh, another transfer um station inside our solid waste work group with, to the tune of twenty-nine million dollars, which was like not doable. Do you know why not give the, the private entity who came the consideration? The entity may or may not, they may not make it through this process. They may not make it through um the state process. So that's the difference. Yeah, we can bid it. We, we started doing it, then they, we pulled it back.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm uh I will guess move on. Uh, I think, I guess the part that confuses me a little bit is um uh, you know, like the RFP would be, we need one of these things in the county. Who would like to build one? And what would, I mean, what would the RFP look like? And I guess what Ms. Miller was asking was, why aren't we doing it? Not that we had one and we didn't act on it. The question I believe was, why aren't we doing it now? If we were ready to approve something, I don't understand what the RFP would even say. But why would we even do it? I don't know. Prickles. Okay. Uh, next speaker, Ms. Vel Castro?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Jack Hayden. Mr. Hayden?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, so thanks you all for the opportunity to address you today. Um, first, I want to introduce myself. I'm a Baltimore County trash hauler. With routes I started forty years ago, residential routes, and still operate today as a public servant. I also own and operate Baltimore Recycling Center. We are a privately owned, operated and funded, state-of-the-art C and D recycling station, happens to be located in Baltimore City. I have a good reputation and I plan on keeping it that way. I don't consider myself a trash mogul by any standard, as I was recently portrayed as. I am a local guy that has done a good job hauling trash in my community and hometown. Trash hauling is my profession and I'm very proud of it. Disposal of the trash that we haul is a major, major component of our operation and our ability to survive. Without disposable, at available and affordable costs, our co- company will not survive. Disposal in the Baltimore Metro area is currently controlled and monopolized by Wall Street National Companies. Because of this, local hometown companies have gone out of business, one after another. We are all experiencing what lack of control does to us as a result of pandemic shortages, being relied upon other people in faraway places. Baltimore County has already reached a very critical waste disposal issue and capacity of facilities. Estimates say only five to seven years of landfill space are left. That's a critical issue in the disposal world. You can't permit and build or modify your permit even to build facilities to transfer waste overnight. Not at the volumes the county has and needs. It has taken me two years to get to this meeting tonight. Two years I've been working on this. Both the county and the city, due to this, these problems, just, you guys just did major, had major consultants study and audit done to recommend solutions. After these exhausting studies, both recommended, the only viable solution is long haul transfer to distant landfills. They further said this is only done reliably and cost effectively by train. Tractor trailers hauling waste is very inefficient. Unexpected fuel surcharges can destroy the county's budget. I would like to know what the current fuel surcharges are right now on the hauling contracts you have, because I guarantee you they've gone up significantly. With the private sector getting squeezed out because of lack of available and cost-effective disposal sites, I have provo- proposed a very small but needed rail transfer station. The maximum tonnage is not what we're going to see every day. That's what you ask for in the permit. And it's, and it has to go through you to get increased. The Eagle Transfer Station is on existing developed industrial property with existing infrastructure and active rail service. We will build and run a pur- purposefully inconspicuous, yet much-needed commercial solid waste transfer station at no cost to the county. I can assure you that three minutes' time does not permit me to anywhere near adequately describe the gravity of the situation you're facing. The use of county transfer sites, which are operated and controlled, as Ms. Walker or Ms. Rogers stated, by others, Wall Street companies, is not the solution others have claimed it to portray. This use is allowed only when low volumes allow, which is not every day. We get kicked out as third-party waste every week. I am available anytime to explain this in much greater detail now or at your convenience at any other time. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate the opportunity to present.
Mr. Hayden, I think you bring a very unique perspective to the conversation. And I think you were extremely helpful. And I uh certainly will take a point of privilege and give you a couple of more minutes. We don't have much because we run in very late. But if you would, if there's another uh item that you want to tell us about and take another couple of minutes to tell us, I will extend that courtesy to you now. If there's something else you want to say.
Okay, thank you very much. First to Mr. Uh Tom Quirk, uh, I'd be more than happy to sit down with him and explain how these operations work or any of you. They are done inside. They are done and kept clean. They, they will have minimum truck traffic. Uh, the train will clearly help that. A truck, a tractor trailer hauls twenty-two tons of waste. A train, each car carries a hundred tons. So you could take all, if we were operating at maximum uh four to five hundred tons a day, it would be four cars. Four train cars a day. And, and we probably won't operate anywhere near that. The other issue that the biggest misconception is that we can dump everywhere. We cannot. There, there's only, there's only, the, the county landfill is a hundred dollars a ton. The WAF is central, is over a hundred dollars a ton. This eight dollars is just a little snippet on the top of it. A WAF is eighty dollars a ton. All disposal in the marketplace is reaching a hundred dollars a ton. And when you guys give these two operators the sanction to use their facilities, they, they tell us what the, they're going to charge us, the eight dollars is on top of it. And they had the right to kick us out anytime they want. And they do it because they want to save whatever space they got for their own trucks to come in. So any of you that have been, lived in the area most of your lives, and I think there's a lot of you, you could probably name five or six or ten haulers that, there's, there's only two or three guys that live here still in the business. We live here, make our living here, and there is a big crisis. The, the, the solid waste department knows that the landfill is full, and even to get an expansion would take years. Anyway, I, I can address any specific questions you have and will be more than happy to.
Can you guess expand, e- expand for me this notion that that you're kicked out? What do you mean? You show up and they say not today, go somewhere else?
I have, I thought I was going to be able to upload uh documents to you guys on the Zoom. I have ten let, I have ten emails here from the last three months or two months from one or two facilities that email us on a daily basis, we're full at twelve o'clock, we're full at two o'clock. You can't come. Waste Management and Republic run the two facilities and they control who comes and who doesn't.
What happens when they say you can't come after twelve? What do you do?
We don't, we, we can't go there. We have to go way out to like maybe Annapolis Junction Transfer Station, if they're still accepting. And they've been diverting every day because they're full. The train transfer station down in Anorundal County, there's very few options. The incinerator is kicking everybody out right now because they have over a year and a half of uplift, upgrades to do, and they've lost a third of their capacity. Um, you know, there's, there's, there's nowhere else to go. If you go, if we come out the eastern landfill, we can, it's a hundred dollars a ton. That's not the market price. The market is more like sixty dollars. That's what you guys are paying. You're paying for transportation and disposal somewhere in that fifty, sixty dollar range, I think. I mean, Nick would know. I don't know. But it's not a hundred.
Okay, are there any additional, listen, um, I, I can't thank you enough, Mr. Hayden, for calling in. And uh, thank you, shared an awful lot of uh light on this issue. I think we all are, are rooting for the home team each and every day. So uh, are there any additional questions or comments from any of the members for Mr. Hayden while we have him? And Mr. Hayden, if you have some information you want to share with us, please forward it to the council office and uh they will distribute it to each and every one of us. So are there any additional questions or comments on the whole subject before we move on? All right, thank you very much. I think it's been a very, very uh informative discussion. And I want to thank the administration for being so forth uh forthright and with the answers. I think we got a lot of things clarified here today, and like I said, Mr. Hayden finishing it off was uh very important. On that note, I guess we will move on to page four, Ms. Beavins. The zoning regulations.
My turn. We done talking trash. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, that was very interesting. I actually am glad Mr. Verden uh called in because that really um put some clarity among, you know, on how important this is. And um, and, and Councilman Marks, I would just like to say before I go into this bill, um, since you're going to be representing them when you win the election, I know Berman Lauralee Beach does not want an extension of the landfill um because of the community that live the closest to it, and they want the landfill filled and shut down. Am I correct? Uh, because it affects their quality of life, so they say. So um, you know, this is a very interesting conversation. Uh, so the bill, um, I'm only working off of one device right now, my phone, so I can't do two things at once. Mr. Boswick, I'm going to let you read the bill and then I'll um, I'll shed some clarity on it.
Uh, yes, yes, uh, Mrs. Beavins. Um, Bill forty-seven twenty-two is entitled uh Uses Permitted in the Business Major Zone. And uh, this bill would amend the byright use of uh a new automobile sales facility that is currently permitted in the BM zone to also allow a used automobile sales facility. Um, however, the used automobile faci- automobile facility would only be located, would only be permitted to be located within one mile of the Middle River Design Review Panel area. Uh, both new and used automobile facilities um could have an adjoining outdoor sales area, um, but also uh dismantled or junked cars unfit for operation on the highways uh could not be stored outdoors, and that would apply to, again, both new and used. So it, 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 the bill really just includes um used sales, used auto sales uh with new, um, except that the used may only be located within a mile of the Middle River Design Review Panel area. That's the primary focus.
Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, so, so this parcel of land that is actually located on Philadelphia Road and Moore's Lane um has been. has been owned by a family, and they've been terrific stores of the property for a very, very long time. And most of you may know in eastern Baltimore County that the Campbell Boulevard extension has been extended and extended and extended. And finally, this is the last little piece that connects Campbell Boulevard from Philadelphia, from Route 40 to Philadelphia Road. So these properties have been, these property owners have been working with the county for many, many years as far as land acquisitions, trying to purchase several feet of each property so we can widen this road, and it will no longer be Moore's Lane. It'll be Campbell Boulevard. And of course, we've been looking for, you know, and hoping that businesses will want to locate there. It's right there near Campbell Boulevard and Philadelphia Road. Right up the road, we have a huge CarMax used car dealership. And across the street, we have a Believo Coons, a Volvo. So this is not something that would be unheard of for this area. And this is the first opportunity that this landowner has had for businesses that say, "Look, we'd like to come to Baltimore County. Auto Nation has a very reputable reputation." And also, I thought it was important that we make sure that this can't turn into a junkyard situation with a lot of, you know, junked up cars just sitting on the outskirts of the property. That's the last thing that we want. So I hope that I'll have the support to get this passed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Beavins, are there any questions or comments from any of the members? I do know we have two speakers.
Okay.
Why don't we hear from the speakers and then we'll go from there?
Okay.
Belle Castro?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first speaker is, and I'm sure I'm not going to pronounce this correctly, Arava Mays. Are you there? Are you there?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Arava Mays, and I'm starting a community initiative in Baltimore County to increase book access by providing free books, the book vending machine to kids in the county. The project has raised, we've had over 3,000 donations for books. We wrote on Good Morning America. Disney has donated 1,000 books. And the summer slide coming up, looking for help from the county to get these book vending machines into everyday spaces. So we're looking to place them in grocery stores, community centers, the YMCA. Mr. Jones, I know this follows your community commitment to enhancing education wherever we can and the county's recent contribution to the library and making finds free. However, all the libraries do a great job. Kids in disadvantaged neighborhoods, if their parents aren't bringing them in, if their parents aren't signing them up for a book, a library card, they still struggle with book access. So we are hoping to get help from the county to get these books installed. We have the machine. It's ready to go. It's a brand-new machine. It's beautiful. And it's stocked with books, and so many people in the county have donated and want to see this happen. So I'm just sharing that story today, and I hope that I can work with some council members to get this installed. A summer slide is upon us, and our kindergarteners who started school in 2019 are really struggling with reading.
Okay, listen, thank you so much, and we look forward to hearing from you. Certainly welcome to reach out to me or any one of us to help see how we can help you. And I guess we'll, if that's it, I guess we'll move on to the next caller.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is, again, Mr. Hayden. Are you there, Mr. Hayden?
Oh, yeah. I'm not a speaker on that topic. I just pushed that by mistake.
Okay, I thought so, but I wanted to call on you just in case we didn't sign up for those items. Okay, thank you.
I'd go to an encore performance.
Belle Castro, for the record, we have no speakers for the bill.
That is correct. Apparently, Ms. Mays signed up. It says on the thing she selected Bill 47. I guess she wasn't aware that it had to be an item on the agenda. And, yes, and Mr. Hayden accidentally signed up for Bill 47. You're correct. No speakers.
Thank you.
Just for the, I guess for the record, we'll let the other young lady know. We normally hear from everyone during the council meetings. At the end of the council meeting, which is Monday night, you can talk for three minutes about anything. But here at the work session, we only focus on the items that are on the agenda. That said, we thank you so much for your presentation, and the offer is open from any one of us. All right, so are we done, Ms. Beavins?
We are done.
All right, so we will move on. We will move on to our last item for today, Mr. James Benjamin.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. This is in regard to Bill 41-22. Allow me to say at the outset that this bill concerns notification. Under the current law, the county administrative officer is only required to notify the county council before changing a fee amount that's established in the code. The code currently does not require the county administrative officer to notify the council before changing a fee amount that's not established in the code. Under current law, certain development fee amounts are not established in the code. Currently, the council has no oversight of development fee amounts not established by code. Furthermore, there is currently no requirement for the county administrative officer to report to or notify the council if the development fee amount is not established in the code. We're talking about a very narrow category here as it relates to development fees. And this Bill 41-22 establishes a process for the county administrative officer to notify the county council in the event a request is made to waive a development fee for an amount not established in the code. The bill would require the county administrative officer to provide the county council a 45-day letter notifying the council of any requests for a waiver of a development fee amount except for a development impact fee, which may not be waived if development impact fees are established under the code. This proposed legislation provides transparency and clarity, and it gives the council oversight it currently does not have. And it also specifies the criteria to be used in considering a request for a development fee waiver. And I believe, Mr. Chair, that the county administrative officer, Ms. Rogers, has some additional information to share with you and the members.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rogers?
And Mr. Gutwold.
Yes, I'm an apologist.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Attorney Benjamin. And I want to thank the council for having spent some time with us discussing this bill and working with us on the amendments. But for those listening, just want to clarify a few things. The origin of this policy dates back to 1985, a policy that was issued by the administrative officer at the time, Mr. Cole. We wanted to, I've shared this with council members, but I do not believe that this was shared with anyone else to be able to see. This is not a new issue. But the last line of this document actually states, oh, it's not allowing me to share. But anyway, the last line of the document of Mr. Cole's policy states that the department would develop procedures for overseeing waiver requests. This is development waiver requests. The legislation and the accompanying procedures that we are proposing do just that. The fee waiver request is very limited. It is not just an open forum for individuals, particularly private entities, to come and request fee waivers. The criteria, and this started back with Mr. Cole's policy, and we did try to memorialize that within the policy that we've developed and in the pieces in the legislation. The first criteria which must be met by any project requesting fee waiver consideration is whether the developer is a nonprofit or for-profit, and the development project will be funded wholly or in part by federal, state, and/or local government resources, including grants, loans, or other economic incentives. So the issue is, this is about government-funded projects. It's not about projects that are private-funded projects. In addition, and this is consistent with other jurisdictions around the country that we have benchmarked with, we have also included, number two, whether the development project will be located in an economically disadvantaged community, a blighted area, or an area targeted to benefit from community development block grant funding, or whether the development project will positively impact the community's health, well-being, quality of life, environment, or other overall sustainability. So that is truly geared toward projects that are funded by government funds. That's the big issue. You must meet that criteria before any consideration can be given. The administration, we have worked on a comprehensive standard operating procedure that gives guidance at every step of the way. What the requister must do, what the department, what PIA must do, what I must do, and then presenting to council what the response from council must be before I can take action. This legislation is to put sunlight on this process. It has been very vague, and there were no written guidelines as was required in 1985. Mr. Gutwold, to his credit, attempted to put some guidelines together. But my position is, this is good government. It's working in concert with the council, and it is a parallel, it will be a parallel process to the similar process we have for fee change requests. Fee changes must be brought to the council, and that time period for consideration is 45 days. We are asking that we do a parallel 45 days. We had initially looked at 15-day, 14-day notice, 30 days. But when we look closely at the parallel process of fee change notifications, we feel that making it simple, having 45 days, is what we are proposing. So we are seeking this legislation for more transparency, for more collaborative communication about what we're doing. And at the end of the day, this legislation does not give the CAO new authority. The authority already exists. What's missing is coming to you and presenting what we're seeking to do. I would like to stop there, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Gutwold is where the projects start with. They come in to him. So Mr. Gutwold, Mr. Chair, if it is okay, I just wanted to let Mr. Gutwold have a moment to share his experience because we've only done two of these in the three and a half years that we've been here.
Okay, Mr. Gutwold?
Thank you, Chairman and members of the council. Yeah. So the two projects that I dealt with, one was a stream restoration project known as King's Eyes Farm. It was funded by the county through Environmental Protection and Sustainability Department. And they came to request the fee, you know, have the fee waived because mostly, A, it was being funded by the county and through a grant, through a grant, and they would have included the funds as part of the grant had they known the fee waivers, what the fee costs would have been. But also, the county received TMDL credits for the project as well, so that was a dual benefit right there. The second project was at the Maryland State Fair. It was a project done by the Center for Watershed Protection. It is a stormwater management type of facility that will also double as a nature, outdoor learning environment for school age children to share them ecology-type of environments and things like that, to teach them that kind of stuff. And it was also funded by the federal government and the state as well. So those are the two projects that came towards us. The King's Eyes project could have been somewhere around because of the nature of the size of that. That was 20-some acres. That would have ran up towards the $25,000. The stormwater management would have probably been a single fee of about $300 because it wasn't that big of a project. But those are sort of the cost estimates that, you know, I never really got a cost, I never did a cost estimate of what the fee would be because we never really got the determination of the limit of disturbance. I never received that information, but I knew sort of the range of where they were. So those were really how we did that. And the process that I had developed was asked to write a letter to me with describing the project, what the funds were being utilized, and what the reasoning or justification for the fee waiver would be. And then forwarded that with a letter from me to the CAO, and then we could respond back to the applicant and then funneled it back all to the agency so they were aware of which projects, you know, were getting a fee waiver from the county.
Okay, so before we move on, let me just make sure I understand because we have five callers. Let me just make sure I have it right, and I don't need a long explanation. I guess need a yes or no. Number one, this whole thing is about granting waivers for nonprofits or some entity that federal, state, or government money is helping to fund.
Yes, sir.
And number two, this is, doesn't happen that much, and most likely it's not even that much money. But the idea is, we're giving them money. Why should we then charge them money? Is that the idea?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And just to be clear, this is just my own knowledge. This is, I know this, nobody wants to hear this, but I'm going to say it anyway. With the metro center, there was state and county money that was helping to fund the project. True?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the members before we get to the callers?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go right ahead.
So it was a good explanation from the different members of the administration. Let's say the council does not pass this proposal. Does that allow for the county administrative officer to waive a fee but just not notify council that that fee's been waived?
Yes, sir. That's the way it is right now, and that's why we're trying to change it.
So that's what we're voting on, whether council is notified or not.
Yes, sir. That's the whole point that we, when this all came up, we recognized that we're going through this process. It wasn't, the business process was not memorialized and codified. And I want to give, you know, kudos to the team for putting words on paper. And we have provided that to you, Councilmember Potoka, the step-by-step of what should be done. And that's what's important in government, knowing with clarity what we should be doing. And that I feel it is good government practice to present to you all when we're waiving a fee and why we're waiving it. The criteria is set. It's always been there. It was just never written in this manner.
Just to be clear, we're talking about a situation where there has been a fee that is not established.
Exactly. It's not established in code.
I see.
I don't have to bring it to you.
I see. So the question is, if the county wants to incentivize an activity, let's say we have an area that may be defined as a food desert.
Yes.
And we want to incent, and we've tried different methods for bringing a supermarket that provides fresh groceries and other products that, that communities want. And if we're not able to do that, but perhaps, um, perhaps with an incentive, uh, an operator of a supermarket, hypothetical situation, might be interested in, um, opening up, establishing an operation where they might not have established that. So, we, the idea is to use it as, as a carrot for something that we want to occur in the county that wouldn't, uh, occur naturally.
Yes, sir, because if you look in section one, it does say, or other economic incentives. So that is, that is something that would be possible in a scenario like that. And you'll see in the, the standard operating procedures, it gives criteria, and it, well, it gives examples, and addressing food insecurity by, uh, trying to, to entice or incentivize a grocery store would be something that we would consider. But that's where we would work with the Department of Workforce and Economic Development in terms of what would be the package. But we would bring this to you if we were going to waive any, uh, of those upfront fees that, that Mr. Gutwold's team, um, manages. And that, that's the other thing we're doing, we're putting the schedule of fees, what they are. But this is not millions of dollars. This is still money that could help be packaged to incentivize the establishment of a grocery store.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand it, because, uh, I feel like there are, there's lots of, um, certainly, it's important that our stakeholders chime in, but I, I want to make sure that the, what we're hearing is based on what the legislation is that is before us right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilman Patoka. On this note, while we move forward with the, with the speakers, and, uh, you know, give everybody an opportunity to weigh in if they'd like after we hear from them. Uh, Ms. Bell Castro?
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our first registered speaker this evening is N. Scott Phillips. Mr. Phillips?
Good evening. Can I be heard clearly?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, um, good evening, and, uh, Council Chair Jones, I thought I had a tough time as the Chair of the Planning Board. You do a great job. Um, I want to say,
Thank you very much.
I want to say, as far as Bill forty-one twenty-two is concerned, a good government is open, transparent, and accountable. And what Bill forty-one twenty-two, uh, does, in my estimation, is just that. Uh, the history of developer fees in Baltimore County has really been one, um, that has gone into kind of a black hole. Um, that's been the history. However, jurisdictions around the country allow for development fee waivers where the project presents a positive public interest. Um, and as I say, unfortunately, the practice in Baltimore County historically has not been open, has not been transparent, and really has not been accountable. So, the, this administration seems to have inherited kind of four decades of, uh, a practice, um, which really hasn't met open government standards. So, I really like, um, what has been proposed, and so I wanted to share that. The proposed legislation attempts to bring process and good government practices to address the issue. Um, the county administrator already says it's sunlight in the process. It provides council with additional oversight. Um, it does not expand the chief administrative officer's authority in any way. Um, I like the fact that it limits, uh, projects to those that are funded by federal, state, or local funds, as some public good as a part of it. Um, and, and that is really in keeping with best practices across the country. So, I, I think it strikes a balance between the need to be flexible in development, and it also provides a policy and a practice that makes sense. I think it also helps us with how people see Baltimore County externally. Um, and hopefully addresses, because what people want to do is feel that government has been responsive, uh, to some of the concerns that they've raised. And my sense is, is this also helps with some of the concerns that have been raised. So, I am in, in support, and I just wanted to share that from a guy who spent a lot of time, uh, listening to public, uh, deal with, um, land use-related issues. So, just thought I'd share that, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, um, Mr. Phillips, we certainly appreciate your service through the county, as well as, we definitely appreciate you testifying today. I was curious, uh, I was looking to see if you had your camera on.
I, I, for some reason, my camera is not on. I don't know whether when I signed in, I wasn't able to, uh, to get the camera to work, so you just got my voice.
Okay. All right, um.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, quick question. Uh, Chris, uh, are these amendments, are they on the screen so that people can see? Because it real, these amendments really clarify this bill. Uh, what, what's the situation? Uh, is it online so the public can get a copy, or, or what?
It is online.
Yeah, they did.
The amendments, uh, Mr. Catch, are online. They, they have been, um, what we did was similar to the P A B bill last month. Um, uh, we, we placed the, the redlined bill with the proposed amendments from the administration on our yellow, in our yellow alert box, uh, with a link.
Good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, Councilman?
Just, just a question to the council, really, like, one, one of the concerns from some of the people that say are opposed, or, or might have issues here, is just the transparency to the public. And so one question just to the council members is, that could be fairly easy to address in a, a simple amendment, saying, hey, when we put the forty-five-day notice out to the council, I mean, is it any harm in just sending out to the public as well? Hey, this is something we're doing, I mean, takes the lack of transparency concern off the table completely. You know, what's the harm of just sending out to the public if it's not a hard thing to do? It, it might be a little overkill, but I just wanted to toss it out there in the interest of really trying to address some of the concerns some of the public has. I just want to toss that out there, see what people thought.
I think, uh, I mean, I, I, I would, I would be open for us to look at it. I mean, I don't see no reason, uh, why we could not possibly, uh, I wouldn't want to stand in the way and make government move too slow. But that said, we're meeting on a regular basis. I don't see no reason why we probably couldn't just throw that in with everything else we're doing.
Yeah, I, as long as it's not like cumbersome or burdensome, I, I don't see any downside to it. If this is like a simple email notification, or whatever the public process, and quite frankly, if somebody in the public has an issue on a waiver, we'll give them a chance to weigh in, or at least express their concerns to the council. I, I doubt if that would happen, but, you know, I think in these times, I don't see much downside, and as long as it's not cumbersome or slowing down stuff unnecessarily, it's just, uh, just taking one of the concerns I was reading from the, some members of the public, and just say, okay, well, we don't have an issue there either. I mean, it's, it's, it's probably in the final analysis, given the limited scope of this bill, uh, fairly easy notification on fairly easy things that probably everybody would most likely support, given the examples that we've been given by Mr. Gutwold.
Well, thank you, Councilman Quirk. Uh, Mr. Phillips, you, you have any more comments? Mr. Phillips?
I think he may be gone.
No, he's there. Mr. Phillips?
He has to unmute himself.
Okay, now I'm there, okay. Sorry about that. No, I, I, I think to, uh, Councilman Quirk's point, it's limited, right? It's focused, but it addresses the concern of the public, which is open, transparent, and it forces everybody to be accountable for however this plays out, right? So, um, you know, like I said, one of the things that I enjoyed about the planning board is our meetings were open, very transparent, and at the end of the day, we were all accountable. And if, if, at the end of the day, we kind of operated as a place where people came first before they came to you. And I think this is an opportunity to do, to follow in kind of that footstep of, of ensuring that, um, citizens have an opportunity to see what's going on.
Well, thank you, Mr. Phillips. Uh, Ms. Bell Castro, next, next caller.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, one more. Our next speaker is Peta Richkus. Ms. Richkus, you're on.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, we can hear you and see you.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to add my comments about Bill forty-one twenty-two and the administration's effort to add a rational procedure to the fee waiver process. My comments derive from my ten-plus years in government operations and from knowing the importance of having policies and procedures that standardize government actions to ensure consistency and fairness. To some degree, my comments will echo those of Mr. Phillips, my fellow commissioner, on the recent procurement reform commission. Not having criteria and a standard operating procedure that addresses fee waivers is a loophole rightly brought to light subsequent to work of the Inspector General Kelly Madigan. As any good public administrator would, Chief Administrative Officer Rogers and the administration then set about to address an identified flaw. Now that the administration has posted the criteria, as suggested by knowledgeable local activists, and having explained the work that has gone into developing work excuse, into developing working operating procedures, the public has an opportunity to consider them and propose or support additional changes to the bill to their council members. The fact that no written guidance had been developed since the matter was first addressed in that nineteen eighty-five policy memo, when Don Hutchinson was county executive, is an agency operations failure. That failure has helped foster decades of managerial laissez-faire, which has been indicative of the ad hoc nature of development decision-making that so many of us have found problematic over the years. Addressing fee waivers is a small step, narrowly focused, as Mr. Phillips pointed out. Bill forty-one twenty-two does not address the many other things about the county's development processes that citizens find deeply flawed. But in my opinion, Bill forty-one twenty-two is a step in the right direction. It also sends the message that the casual decision-making processes left to the personal, personal discretion of an agency head will not stand. I'm glad that the criteria and the administration's proposed amendments have been made available to the public. Doing so adds to transparency, and they should be included in consideration of the bill. In the best of all possible worlds, it would have been better if the redlined version of forty-one twenty-two had been made available sooner, so that those wishing to speak on the bill today could have had time to consider and address the changes. Let me close by saying that I agree with others, such as my friend, Mr. Phillips, who asked that, uh, and Councilman Quirk, who asked that Bill forty-one twenty-two include a, a public notification requirement. This, in addition to adding council oversight, would add a transparency and accountability to the fee waiver process that has been lacking. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Richkus. Next speaker, Ms. uh, Bell Castro.
I thought the bill had a posting. Required posting. Thought it did, but maybe I'm thinking of another bill. I think it had a required posting.
Ms. Bell Castro, uh, Councilman Catch, check your mic.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I thought he was speaking to one of the members. Our, my apologies. Uh, our next speaker is Ms. Colvin, let me make sure I have the first name correct, my apologies, Carolyn, Carolyn Colvin, and she is on by phone. Ms. Colvin?
I'm sorry, I, um, I have to be on phone, but I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. I am Carolyn Colvin, I'm the former commissioner of the Federal Security Administration, but I also served on the Baltimore County Commission on Fiscal Sustainability. During our work as a commission, it was very clear that the county needed to begin to develop policies and procedures in many areas, and better define and document business processes to ensure better operational accountability. Uh, and this is something that was needed across the government. I've spent my entire career in local, state, and federal government focused on how to really administer good programs and effective programs. And I believe that this administration has worked diligently to provide clarity in its operation and, uh, certainly, um, transparency, uh, to the public. Um, to begin, the administration has developed standard operating procedures to make it clear to everyone as to what steps need to be taken, what projects are eligible and what is not. And I've read the operating procedures, um, fully. Um, and also, the legislation gives the council the ability to review and consider if they are amenable with the proposed waiver. Uh, and during the forty-five-day time period, they can call a hearing to discuss the matter. So I believe that this legislation provides an opportunity that does not now exist, and is certainly, um, going to be better for the administration as it looks at, um, trying to ensure, uh, clarity in its operations and transparency. The legislation does, uh, shed some light on what the administration is seeking to do. It demonstrates the willingness of the administration to work closely with the legislative branch, and that is what good government is all about. So I would urge you to support the legislation and to provide an opportunity for the public to see government at its best. And I think that many good policies run into trouble because you don't have the standard operating procedures that you have here, and you don't really have a level of transparency that the public, uh, demands in this day and age. So again, I urge you to support this legislation, um, as it moves forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your, uh, comments, and taking the time to hang in there to testify, because I know it's been a long day for all of us. Uh, next speaker, Ms. Bell Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Kathy Wolfson. Ms. Wolfson?
Let me get in here. Can you all hear me? And let me start my video. Okay, can you hear me and see me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you for, um, all your time. I, every time I attend one of these, I'm just amazed at the council's stamina. You know, I know we're, we're getting into hour three. Um, and for all transparency, I do want to note that I am Julian's, um, appointee for, to the planning board. However, Julian has not been made aware of this testimony, so, um, you know, he's free of any, um, any blame or, um, accolades that are associated with this. Uh, in addition to being on the planning board, I've also been a fourteen-year, um, community activist with the West Side Greater Patasko Community Association, and I can tell you one thing. People are always asking, how can the, how can they just wave a magic wand and make these fees go away? I mean, uh, our constituency is very frustrated with that. Um, so I really applaud and support this, um, this bill. Um, and it doesn't, you know, I'm kind of like confused about the grocery stores. If anybody in the world could get a grocery store, it would be Julian Jones on Liberty Road. I mean, if there's one thing that Julia could grant, it would be a giant grocery store at the corner of Liberty and Old Court Road, not to diminish the food line and the Aldi's, but, you know, we need more grocery stores. He hears that over. He hears that over and over again. I do really appreciate how the criteria outlined in this bill provides some structure, objective structure for the relief for the development fees. It's just not fair to put the whole responsibility of these waivers on the administrative officer. And I further appreciate how this bill aligns with the goals of the West County Redevelopment Authority established through Maryland Legislature this year. It aligns perfectly. These are, these are funds that are coming from the state and the county, and we really, really need to do whatever it takes to enhance the 90 acres of total impervious surface at the corner of Security Boulevard and Rolling Road. It's, I really applaud this, this goal and the application of these waivers to, to these applications. And, you know, if, if anything that would further the enhancement of projects like that, and they, and the redevelopment of areas such as Security Square Mall, Destination, not just for people in the county, I mean, everybody goes to Towson. We need people to come to 21244. And we need that destination, not just for county residents, but for regional residents. So, these types of fee waivers for those types of projects are very appropriate and further that goal. So, thank you for your time, and I hope you'll consider it, consider that testimony.
Thank you so much, and we really appreciate your calling in. And as always, we appreciate your service on the planning board. Ms. Bell Castro, next speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. Our last speaker this evening is Beth Miller. Ms. Miller is also on by telephone, I believe. Ms. Miller?
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members, and Ms. Rogers, for this marathon session. I want to thank the administration for their work on this bill, and I appreciate the criteria were developed. I have a few comments about them. If the intent is to have this apply only to nonprofit or government-funded projects, the or after criteria number two needs to be and. Otherwise, criteria one and two do not need to apply, and it only needs to be a development project that will positively impact the community's health, well-being, quality of life, environment, or overall sustainability, which is rather subjective criteria. I am very familiar with how these criteria can be interpreted, and so that is a very important word, or needs to be and. If you want to get, if you want a grocery store, then you create a commercial revitalization district. It now is getting government funding, and it also provides more benefit to other development in that area. It's not such a narrow focus. So, I, I think that is an important amendment that needs to be made to this amendment. I also question, I, I, well, let me say, go back and say, I support Tom Quirk's suggestion that these applications be posted publicly. For an example of how that's done, you can look at the environmental variances by district. And I would also suggest that the amount of the waiver that's being considered being listed, because the two examples you gave, $25,000, $300, that's, that's not a big deal. The Metro Center, we are told, was in the millions of dollars. And just to bring another point of view here, we are operating with a landscape manual that is 22 years old, an open space manual that is 22 years old, Towson Community Plan that is 30 years old. There is apparently not adequate funding for our planning department to update these important documents, very important documents, when you consider climate crisis and other issues, walkability, other issues that are impacting the quality of life of our county residents. So, this money is needed to run that department. All that money apparently is now going toward development review, and nothing is left over for, for the other important functions of the planning department. So, I think that concludes my comments. I appreciate your attention.
Well, Ms. Miller, I feel, wait a minute, I feel compelled to guess, straighten out one thing, because I, you know, some things I know, as you know, because you picked up on the and when, and the or. Sometimes people embellish things, and they make them more than they are. For example, the Metro Center fees were not millions of dollars. But when you say the fees and/or securities, and you throw those things together, then you get millions of dollars, because the securities belong to the developer, and as long as he or she or they do what they're supposed to do, they get that money back. But when you throw those things together, then you can come up with millions of dollars. But the fees were not millions of dollars. But it was reported that fees and securities equal millions of dollars. That's how you get to millions. The, the fee, the security that we charge developers when they're going to put in a road, or sewage, or whatever, we make sure they do it to our standard, or else they can't get their money back. As long as they do do it, they get their money back. So, I guess I wanted to make that point of clarification that sort of stuck in my craw when I read it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Quirk?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I, I think one of suggestions is fairly easy, too. So, when we do the public disclosure, we'll also make sure that the amount is listed as well. It takes like the boogeyman out of the equation. Everything's transparent. Nobody feels like something's being done behind the scenes. I think it's a super easy amendment, so I'm happy to add that into the amendment. And I, I also talked to the administration about this idea, and everybody was fully supportive, so makes it a good policy.
Okay. I agree.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Petoka?
And maybe Ms. Rogers can address this, too. I agree with Ms. Miller about the planning department, and really ramping up their functionality. You know, we as a council, our limitations on the budget are, we can cut, we can't add, we can't move, but I do think that we need to reverse the trend of not investing early on in the planning for some of the things that Ms. Miller cited. And I know that you guys, you all know that I'm a strong advocate for the planning department, and I don't just mean this in jest. I do think that the more we can address upfront in, in, in our planning efforts, the stronger county will be down the road when we're in the implementation phase. So, I just wanted to say, I can't agree with, I couldn't agree anymore with Ms. Miller's observation and comments about the county department of planning.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Rogers?
Right, I just wanted to make one point, Mr. Chair and council members. That criteria one is a must. I mean, it's not an option where down into two or three. And however we need to craft this within it, the whole point, and I'm, I'm keeping in the spirit of Mr. Cole's original summary, which I've shared with, with, and shared with you all, and sent upstairs so you could see. It's about the money. It was, it was about how it was funded, and I do believe the intent was to be able to, you know, not give money out and then take it back. And the accompanying document that we're working on with Mr. Gutwold is definitely what the fee schedule will be. As Mr. Councilmember Quirk indicated, we are very amenable to the 45-day notice. One of the hallmarks of the county executive is community engagement and transparency at the community level, and so we don't have a problem with that at all.
The only, the only, only thing that I would add is 45-day notice is fine, but let's hope that people can move forward and not be sitting around waiting for the 45 days. In other words, the only issue would be whether they had to pay or not pay. If they had to pay, they have to pay, but let's not have them sit around waiting for 45 days. Let's get them moving.
And Mr. Councilmember Jones, you're, I think you said it, but have that as a simultaneous process within the 45 days that where you're reviewing, so that it could be held within that, that, that process? Because then it's one for, one, one set of 45 days, and not 90 days, that it could be simultaneous.
Because at the end of the day, people, the cost of the fee is not going to be a deal breaker. They're going to do it no matter what. But anyway, any additional questions or comments from anyone? I would like to take the opportunity to guess, thank our callers who called in. They've been on the line an awful long time to make their points known to us, and I think their points were very helpful to the conversation, whether it be this, the Eagle Transfer Station you had, whatever. We spoke about today, their voices are very important to us, and I appreciate them hanging in there to share their concerns and ideas with us. And if there's no further comments from anyone on the line, I guess we'll adjourn. All right, thank you, everybody.
More speakers.
What'd he say?
I said no more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I didn't think so. I was looking, I was like, what?
Speakers, Chris.
Four more, that's what I was saying, what? Where did they come from? Okay, everybody, take care.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
Sure.
Have a good evening.